Good evening, I call to order the virtual study session of the Lakewood City Council on March 17th at seven. To connect. Mine, please use one of the following links at LakewoodSpeaks.org or Lakewood.org/councilvideos. For online public comments, you may post those comments at any link to Lakewood. My forum for what come. Been open tonight and through 10 a.m. tomorrow morning for any comments related to tonight's presentations. We do have three presentations slated for the. Here from Jefferson Center for Mental. Date on our street maintenance program and then the very excitedly anticipated update for Lakewood's comprehensive plan and upcoming zoning update. So welcome everyone. Tonight. First off, Mr. Clerk, if you could please start us off with calling the role.
Mayor Strom.
Here.
Counselors Cruz.
Here.
LaBure is absent. Lo.
Here.
Maikaro.
Here.
Nice to him. Do we, Counselor Nystrom? Are you there? Oh, there you are.
I have an audio issues.
Okay, we, we got you. Thank you. Sharazai.
Here.
I'm sorry, Ryan is absent. We got Sharazai and Sinks.
Here.
Great. Mayor Shami, you have a quorum.
Okay, thank you. For presentation tonight, I was. Buddy to Kiar Councillor, the President and CEO of Jefferson County Center for Mental Health. And Kiar has joined us this evening to give us a presentation about their organization. And I'm sure council will have some questions to follow. Thank you so much for joining us this evening.
Thank you so much, Mayor Strom and, and city councillors. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight and really appreciate your interest and your support for behavioral health, particularly at the, at a critical period of time that we're in right now. And so I will share my presentation here. Okay. So if there are questions as I go through the presentation, please alert me to that. I can't see everyone's, everyone's face is on the screen during this presentation. So wanted to share just a little bit about the need for behavioral health and then I'll share more about what Jefferson Center does and some of the current context that we're facing in behavioral health. So this shouldn't come as a surprise. I know that we, we are all aware of the need for behavioral health. At this point, nearly one in four people, adults in the United States struggle with a mental health condition. This has grown over the past several years. It used to be one in five and now the, the increased need is clear and, and present. I put in a few statistics here specific to Colorado as well. In, in Colorado, we are ranked number 10 in suicide deaths across the country. And across the country, suicide is the number one leading cause of death in teenagers. We also know that drug overdoses are, have been on the rise for many years. We're actually seeing a little bit of a stabilizing of that trend in 2024. But it continues to be at high levels and only about half of the people needing behavioral health care are accessing the care that they need. We know that.
Five, 10. Go to the Bluetooth menu on your smartphone and select it.
I apologize. I'm having some audio issues. I'm trying to fix it.
So we, we know that the mental health impact is substantial when people aren't able to get the treatment and care that they need. They struggle in school, they struggle in work. There's more family instability that can lead to intergenerational challenges with mental health and substance use and much more chronic physical health conditions as well. Overall, people with mental health conditions have a shorter life expectancy and a lot of this has to do with the social emotional dynamics and relational dynamics of mental health as well as medications that are used to treat mental health conditions. And social isolation in general can lead to very poor health outcomes, both mental health outcomes as well as physical health outcomes. So speaking a little bit now to, to who we are at Jefferson Center and, and what we do in the community. Jefferson Center has been a nonprofit mental health center for 67 years. And our primary focus is on serving the communities within Jefferson County, Gilpin County and Clear Creek County. We serve around 25,000 people each year in a variety of services, both in our offices, in the community and partnership. And I'll talk a little bit more about what those types of services are as we go along. And we also connect with an additional 25,000 people a year in outreach and engagement, prevention, training, curriculum, really expanding the number of people that can support the work that we do in, in behavioral health. And we have about 800 people on our team at Jefferson Center right now who put their heart into doing this work every day. Jefferson Center truly is embedded in the community. So many mental health centers have their roots in, in community. At Jefferson Center, we know that not everyone has the ability to come into one of our office locations or there may be several barriers that exist in terms of their ability to access the care that they need, whether it's transportation or childcare or stigma or just the fear of walking into an office called Jefferson Center for Mental Health. And so we try to be in the community where people are. We have 26 of our Jefferson Center locations, but we're also in partnership with 40 schools where we have behavioral health providers in the schools. We have behavioral health providers in more than 30 health clinics. These are pediatric practices, primary care practices, specialty practices, making sure that people have the behavioral health support in a, in a comforting environment for them. We partner with nursing homes and assisted care facilities and in a number of other community partnerships, whether it's with law enforcement, domestic violence shelters and, and, and housing projects and programs as well. So this is a high level overview of the services that we provide and I'm going to touch on some categories of services here in a little bit more, more depth, so I won't spend too much on this slide. These are some of the types of services that we provide to kids and teenagers and their families. About 30% of the people that we serve at Jefferson Center are youth. And so this is a huge part of what we do from early childhood, supporting kids and families zero to eight as well as their caregivers and community partners to really wrap around children that may be at risk for domestic violence or intergenerational trauma. And really work on forming those attachments with, with caregivers and giving kids the, the tools and supports that they need early on. We work very closely with our, with our school partners as well. Both providing counseling in the schools as well as providing prevention curriculum. So really teaching the language of identifying signs and symptoms and emotional regulation and coping. We also provide a fair amount of intensive services in the family's home as well as programs intended to support diversion from juvenile justice engagement as well as our new Vista's crisis stabilization unit, which supports kids and families in, in an acute episode of crisis. And then a lot of family support. So we can't support youth unless we're able to also support the caregivers involved in that youth's home environment. So that's a big part of what we do. Our adult continuum is wide ranging and it includes those things that you think of as traditional outpatient therapy, group therapy, medication assistance. But we also support people through our peer specialist program. So peer services is a programming where individuals with their own lived experience who are in recovery from mental health conditions or substance use disorders are able to provide hope and recovery and support and connection through the therapeutic process. And we provide a lot of wraparound services as well. So really helping individuals with skill building, obtaining jobs and, and employment so that they can demonstrate those areas of success and feel proud of the accomplishments that they're making. And we have specific programming focused on older adults as well as intensive services that are more community based and in the home environment for people with more intensive and chronic mental health conditions. We also operate three alternative care facilities. These are places where people live who need 24/7 support and they can be in our assisted care facilities for a year, up to many years, if that's the type of support that they need. If they're facing chronic and long-term mental health challenges. Here's an array of services provided in our mountain communities as well. So pretty much everything that we're able to offer within our, our metro and suburban areas, we're able to offer in our mountain communities. Some of this is via telehealth, which the pandemic has really opened up and, and we are seeing a lot of people choosing telehealth services in our mountain communities because it just reduces some of that stigma of, of being in an office in the community that's, that's so close knit and, and smaller. Our substance use services continuum has really expanded dramatically over the past seven years. And we now have essentially a full continuum of substance use services, including the front door for many people is our 24/7 withdrawal management program. You may be familiar with the term social detox or detox program. This is where folks are able to, to come if they're acute, acutely intoxicated and need a safe environment to withdraw from, from substances. And the most important piece of this program is connecting to ongoing services and supports. And so the goal is really being there when people need us and being able to, to engage in our, in our continuum of substance use services. And we also provide medication assisted treatment. We do that in our offices, but also through our mobile, our mobile van that travels to more rural areas. Providing outpatient individual and, and group therapy, intensive therapy. We also have a women's housing program for women in recovery. And this just allows us to wrap around folks and get them on their feet with support with employment, support with regaining functioning and independent living as well as often reconnecting with, with children who they may have lost custody of during their, their substance use challenges. We also have an adult substance use residential treatment program and a real-time walk-in collaborative care clinic. The collaborative care clinic is a prescriber, a therapist, a peer specialist, a wellness coach and resource benefits navigator, all in the same place and, and people can walk into that clinic or join virtually and receive the care that they need same day. And so that's a new, newer addition to our substance use continuum. We partner very closely with law enforcement and our criminal justice partners to make sure that, that we're doing everything that we can to divert from criminal justice involvement or engage in treatment so that they're able to, to come out of jail and prison with the supports in place that they need to, to reengage in the community and be really active members of their communities as well. One, one additional thing I'll mention here is our training for law enforcement, so CIT training and mental health first aid training. Our incredible programs, we have such committed law enforcement partners across Jefferson County and certainly in Lakewood. And so there's the, the mental health first aid training and the CIT training is a critical component of our law enforcement and first responders having the skills to identify when there's a mental health condition, how to reach out for support and how to support individuals in the community in a, in a trauma informed way that, that is able to, to support those mental health conditions. Navigation services are also available to everyone in our community, not only our clients and the people that we're serving, but anyone is, is welcome and encouraged to call, to call us if they have questions about resources or benefits, whether it's housing assistance or accessing Medicaid or Medicare, social security. It could be something that's a one-time need. Somebody might be going to the hospital and needing. care for their pet while they're temporarily in in hospital or residential care. So our navigation team really has access to hundreds of community resources and is there to support those referrals with with other community agencies and partners to really wrap around the whole needs of the people that we serve and the people in our community. Safe housing is an incredibly key part of of this work that we do and incredibly important to recovery. When people have a safe place to live and they're not struggling day to day to to make sure that that they can survive through a cold night or keep track of their their benefits, information, their IDs, their their cards. When they're able to have that safe housing, they're able to take more steps towards achieving the long term mental health care and physical health care that we need. So we have a full housing continuum, and we support about four hundred and fifty individuals with vouchers. That just means that that folks with housing vouchers of some kind, we provide case management and support in navigating those those housing opportunities and keep them engaged in in being a good tenant, a good neighbor. We have seven residential transitional or permanent supportive housing programs at Jefferson Center and six apartment buildings, and those apartments are focused on permanent supportive housing, but also voucher based housing and just affordable housing, trying to keep those rents affordable for the community. We work really closely with RTD as well as other housing navigation partners to be out and about and engaging folks that that are unhoused in obtaining that navigation assistance and voucher voucher application process. We opened our solid ground apartments in Lakewood last year and and really thankful for the partnership that we've had with the city for many, many years related to this project and so many others. One key story of success that I'll share, we had an individual in our in our recovery housing who needed a critical surgery that they hadn't been able to receive in the community because they didn't have a safe place to to recover from that surgery. They were finally able to to obtain an apartment through our solid ground apartments. They had their surgery successfully and had the support that they needed to to recover. And now that individual is is volunteering in his church community and has started working part time as well. So this is what's possible when we're able to really give people that safe landing space. We do a lot of work in partnership with primary care and physical health care because total wellness is is all of that, it's mental health and it's and it's physical health, and it's making sure that there's prevention, care coordination, and wellness built in there as well. And we also operate two pharmacies and and support vaccines as those are needed for the community also. Just a little overview on our wellness services. Wellness services, classes, and coaching are available for anyone in the community and just helps to to know that behavioral well being, behavioral health and well being is not a linear process, and engaging in those healthy habits and having the support to do that keeps keeps us well. Our community outreach and engagement is critically important to making sure that as many people as possible across our communities are are armed with the information and resources that they need so that if someone in your life, your neighbor, a coworker, a family member, or yourself are struggling, you know how to get the support that's needed, and you're not afraid to talk about it. So with behavioral health workforce challenges, there will never be enough therapists and counselors to provide all of the need that exists, and so if we can spread information for us all to be ambassadors for behavioral health, it really, really makes a difference. We're available as a community partner to support in times of crisis. So if if a community partner or or a business community or faith community experiences a crisis, whether it's a loss of of a loved one within that community, whether it's a a natural disaster or a community emergency, Jefferson Center goes out and partners to provide the emergency debriefing, crisis and and ongoing mental health support wherever that's helpful. I'm just going to shift for a few few more minutes to to some of what we're seeing in Colorado right now. So Colorado has has gone through a challenging year with Medicaid disenrollments over the past year, you know, when the when the pandemic began, the public health emergency ensured that people maintained their Medicaid benefits throughout the course of that public health emergency. We knew that when the public health emergency ended about a year and a half ago, that many people would be appropriately disenrolled because they had obtained other sources of insurance and were no longer eligible for Medicaid. So we projected that that there would be a decline. However, Medicaid disenrollments in Colorado doubled the number of Medicaid disenrollments that were projected, and a large portion of those that were disenrolled were actually not engaged in any other private insurance or or healthcare support. So many of these folks have become and remain without insurance. Colorado was the the number one state in the country in terms of the net Medicaid disenrollments over the course of of that that year period. And it just created a tremendous hardship for thousands of people in our community in Lakewood who are now without insurance. That on top of a number of behavioral health reforms in Colorado has led to declining funding and declining support for people who need behavioral health care. At Jefferson Center, we're now serving more than six thousand people without any type of insurance and about ten thousand total who either have no insurance at all or who are underinsured, meaning that their behavioral health services are not fully covered by their private insurance. There are several systemic adjustments that we're paying attention to right now, both at the state level as as well as the federal level. So we talked about some of those those state impacts, both the the decline in Medicaid funding due to decreasing Medicaid enrollments, but also the Behavioral Health Administration that funds non Medicaid public supports for behavioral health. There are reductions within that program as well, which means less funding available to support people without insurance. There's also been significant Medicaid payment model changes for behavioral health, meaning that the Medicaid payments themselves are no longer covering the full cost of care. So there's a lot of changes at the state level and certainly with the with the budget deficit that the state of Colorado is facing right now. The challenges are many, and there is are decreases across the board. So behavioral health is is one that is certainly at jeopardy right now. At the federal level, there are several impacts for for behavioral health, most specifically through the Medicaid proposals, proposed cuts. These could happen in a number of ways. I won't go into a lot of detail on these potential cuts in Medicaid funding at the federal level, but essentially all of these potential paths to Medicaid reductions at the federal level lead to fewer people enrolled in Medicaid in Colorado and less federal funding coming to Colorado to support Medicaid broadly, but certainly behavioral health specifically. The estimates of of Medicaid cuts at the federal level to Colorado are about a thirty percent reduction in federal funds for Medicaid, and that equates directly to the same reduction in behavioral health funding that comes to to Jefferson Center. So this these are significant impacts that could truly jeopardize access and availability of of behavioral health in our communities. And there's also potential for reductions in health and human services funding at the federal level, and that could decrease grant opportunities as well as non Medicaid behavioral health funding that comes through the the federal government and the state. So we are busy engaging with our joint budget committee, our state legislators. I'm meeting with the governor tomorrow for a Medicaid round table to talk about these implications and certainly federal policy action as well. Behavioral health is is a nonpartisan issue. We all know the importance of behavioral health, and and yet we need to protect it actively right now in order to to avoid some pretty devastating reductions in behavioral health funding and behavioral health programs and services. So this is the last slide, just wanted to give you some highlights, even with all of these challenges that we're anticipating systemically. Jefferson Center is committed to moving forward and being responsive in our communities. Sateria Landing is a comprehensive recovery campus, bringing together acute care services in a single location for people with substance use disorders, really creating a recovery community to ensure long term success and recovery. And we are in the process of 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 renovation plans and capital campaign and working with some new market tax credit opportunities to support the build out of Sateria Landing. We're very committed to stabilizing the core services for people with Medicaid and without insurance. We have more gaps in funding than we've ever had before for folks without insurance in particular and need to to make sure that we're still able to provide those core services. We know that people with insurance also struggle tremendously to access the care that they need. And so we're looking at ways to to separate the work that we do in potentially a subsidiary model to provide care for people with private insurance through a separate entity. That's necessary because of the payment model changes in Colorado that that make it really challenging to to provide care for for both segments of the community. And then more than ever, we're committed to delivering value and making sure that the quality of care is is seamless and and continuing to evolve to meet the community's needs. And so these are some of those ways that that we continue to to do that work. Just a couple other slides about who we are and how to how to engage, but happy to to take questions. And certainly you'll have these slides if you have further follow up needs.
Thank you so much for that. You guys are an amazing partner, supporting so many of our residents. And for all of that work, just start by saying thank you, and that feels so small when you take into consideration what exactly you you all are doing. So thank you also for being here, joining us this evening to give us the the update and the background and and details about the organization. I'll open the floor up to our city council. Do we have any city councilors that have questions? Counselor Lowe.
Yeah, thank you so much for this this presentation. I'm I am, you know, I had some sense of the the breadth and depth of what you all do, but it's it's a it's very impressive, and I think speaks to the enormous need you all provide and and me in our community in so many ways. So thank you. And I know, I mean, I think we we heard loud and clear at the end of your presentation, some of the the particularly difficult pressures you all are under as you all continue to provide these services. So thank you. And, you know, obviously, I think I think I I feel common, I speak for many of my colleagues when I say, you know, the city wants to be a a strong partner with you all and and want to make sure that you all can continue to provide these services. In that context, I I realize it's like challenging to ask about another service, because you all do so much. I did want to take the opportunity to ask, you know, one of the things that 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 I've seen that that is a particularly promising evidence based practice in terms of preventing juvenile crime is the service multi systemic therapy or MST. I know there've been some previous conversations about JFCO Mental Health Center looking at providing that. I understand the context of some of the Medicaid cuts and pressures you all are under. It's it's a very difficult time to to look at offering any new services. So I guess my question is, if, and I realize this is a very big if, and the if is doing a lot of work here, but if there was a way to provide MST in a way that would be financially viable and where, you know, a combination of Medicaid or other funding sources would fund it, is that something you might look at? And if the answer is, we need to, this is a a longer discussion for another time, that's a perfectly fair answer, but I did want to raise it.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Lowe, and very much appreciate your support, the support of of the entire city council in Lakewood over the years. It's it's not possible to do this work without great partners, and Lakewood has been an incredible partner. So really very much appreciate that. As it relates to multi systemic therapy, there that it is certainly an evidence based practices, practice that has shown promising outcomes and and solid outcomes in the community. The the direction that we have taken at Jefferson Center recently to to basically have similar impacts, I will say, really working with families, engaging in the home. We've used trauma systems therapy as the approach in the past several years, and it's allowed for a little bit more flexibility than the evidence based practice MST has sometimes afforded in terms of being able to be responsive to to a wide range of needs for families within the home and intended to have similar outcomes in terms of diversion from from criminal justice, staying in in school, avoiding, you know, truancy, truancy diversion work as well. And and I know we've had some of some of these conversations before, but would love to just share with you, counselor, some more specifics about trauma systems therapy and some of the outcomes there and see see how that compares to some of the the things that you've heard about MST. You know, certainly Jefferson Center is always evolving. So if there is is an approach that better meets the community needs, we're always always open to evaluating those and and working together on funding opportunities.
Thank you. Would would love, we don't need to do it now, would love a chance to to maybe have one more conversation, if appropriate, with you and your team about trauma systems therapy, MST, and sort of opportunities there. Understand what you're saying, certainly understand the the value of of. Is can I, is trauma systems therapy delivered in the home? Like, is it, do the therapists go out and actually meet with the with both the family and the kiddo in their home, like multiple, with multiple visits?
It is.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's multiple visits over the course of the week, but it could be once every couple weeks, it could be three times a week. It has a little bit more flexibility. MST and evidence based practices sometimes have a very set protocol that that sometimes works incredibly well, and sometimes it's a little bit less flexible.
Okay, yeah, would love to learn a little bit more about about how it's being provided. I I do, to me, the bottom line is you all are uniquely well positioned to sort of provide a service that or the set of services that can prevent crime before they occur and, you know, help help sort of intervene and and work with these kiddos and these families before they end up just as involved. I think it's just such a powerful thing that you all do. I know you provide many services. I'm very enthusiastic about any opportunities to work with you all to to make those services available in Lakewood, because I think it's, you know, as as we hear so much from our constituents about concerns about crime, I I think it is 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 truly the most effective approach we can take in the long run, both in terms of like what actually works, what's most compassionate, what's going to keep our kids safe, what's the most sort of budget, smart way to spend money. So would would love to work with you on making sure those services are available, and thanks again for everything that you do.
Thank you. Yes, I will reach out to you separately, and we'll set up a time to connect more on that. Thank you.
That'd be awesome. Thank you.
Counselor Mia Guerrero. Thank you. You talked a lot about the importance of being a good neighbor and mentioned your permanent supportive housing that exists here in Lakewood. And I'm wondering if you could talk at all about, I I know because I got to be a part of some of the community outreach that happened ahead of the opening of at least one of those facilities. Wondering if you could talk a little bit more about like that process before you open permanent supportive housing? And also, if you do experience like large amounts of inquiry or complaints, I kind of imagine not, but I I think it's important to be able to have an opportunity to say that out loud. I definitely get questions, but from my constituents, but often not actually at the right address. And so I think that there's often like bias based, like a signing of blame to like your facilities for other actually totally unrelated incidences. So I'm wondering if you could just talk a little bit more about that. And also, you know, of course, I think you mentioned the unpredictability of some of your funding sources right now, and of course, anything that Lakewood can do to be helpful, but I don't, I doubt there there is in this moment, but just want to like double down and bring that awareness, because I think all of the social programs that we talk about during the year as a city are going to be faced. um are going to be facing similar types of consequence and stress and what like the public to sort of be able to see that through, right? So I'm just re-upping that as a point that you made. My last point, though, is that Counselor Nye Storm's mic is still not working. Um, so at some point in between our presentations, she is going to restart and have to come back, just so that you all know. Um, I think Mr. Rob will have to let her back in. Um, but she's like paying avid attention in this in this moment, and we'll restart um as we transfer speakers. Um, that's more of a staff FYI. Uh, thank you, though, very much for your time and for being here today.
Thank you. Thank you so much, counselor, and um thank you for your engagement in in sort of some of those those pre-planning, pre-engagement um efforts around the permanent supportive housing and otherwise. Um, it is so important to to connect with with the community, with the neighborhood, um and with the direct neighbors anytime that that we're implementing a new apartment, whether it's permanent supportive housing or whether we're opening a new program. Um, and we've done that in a number of different neighborhoods across the communities that we serve. Um, and a huge part of that is education and open houses and forums um to really talk about the the value. Um, not only for the individuals that will be residents at a an apartment complex that we're opening or a program that we're opening, um, but also for the community. Oftentimes, the people that were that were housing in permanent supportive housing, they're in the community already. They just don't have a place to to sleep. Um, and so they end up being um more on the street, um more visible, um, less sa- in less safe environments, both for them and the community. Um, and so a lot of what we do is provide education about how um this provides more safety, more opportunities for the individuals to to access the care um and support that they need. Um, and so many success stories. So permanent supportive housing has incredible success rates of people ending up um in ongoing housing and functioning as as really important um contributors in the community through jobs and uh and volunteering and otherwise. So we do a lot of education, and then we do ongoing engagement with the neighbors and um to have just a very open line of communication. Um, and so if there's ever concerns, um our program manager at whatever um facility or complex that we're talking about um has that direct communication with the neighbors. Um, at this point, we don't, we're not getting a lot of of neighborhood complaints for any of our programs or facilities directly. Um, it's usually in advance of something opening that there's a lot more worry and fear and concern. Um, and then we always, I mean, we're committed to being good neighbors. Um, and so we want to keep those open lines of communication and make sure to respond if there are concerns that arise. Because every once in a while, of course, there are concerns that arise, and we make sure to be as responsive and timely as we can. Um, I do want to say if if you all are hearing of any concerns that are specific to Jefferson Center, always please, please feel free to reach out um to to me or anyone on our team, um because we want to make sure that we're able to connect and respond if there are concerns. Um, in terms of of funding support, you know, I really have appreciated the support of of the city of Lakewood. Um, uh, in so many ways, um, the city of Lakewood supports our crisis and withdrawal management program um annually, which is so critical to keeping those programs open and and running. Um, also, the the recent support related to supporting those people without insurance who have lost coverage over the past year, um, a critically important um a way that we've been able to keep most of our programs up and running over the past year um with the support of of Lakewood. So very much appreciate all of your support, specifically in the area of of supporting people without insurance, um, which is the the largest gap that we're facing right now, both in Colorado and federally. Thank you very much for the question and support.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you again so much for joining us and for everything that you guys do.
Thank you so much. Again, I very much appreciate each and every one of you, and please reach out with questions um or concerns or suggestions at any time and look forward to the ongoing partnership. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, for our second segment this evening on um the pavement management program, I will now hand the floor over to Max Kirschbaum, the Director of our Public Works Department, to introduce this item and our speakers.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this evening, we have the opportunity to discuss with you our pavement management program that takes care of all the city streets. Uh, specifically, we look forward to the opportunity to talk about some of the concepts, the methods and the data we use to uh execute an effective program uh within city budget. This evening, I'd like to introduce Justin Rickett, who is the Operations Manager for Public Works. And I'd like to introduce Brian Harfst, who is Streets Superintendent, and the two of them will tag team on this presentation this evening. With that, I'll turn it over to Justin.
Thank you, Max, and thank you, Mayor and Councilors, for giving us a little bit of your time this evening. And I think I'll try to share my screen real quick. Everybody see that all right?
Yep, thanks, Justin.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, thank you guys again for your time. We do appreciate it. This is something that Brian and myself are very passionate about. Uh, taking care of the streets and the roadways for the city of Lakewood. Uh, so I'll dive right in to kind of talk about the number of roadways maintained in the city of Lakewood. Uh, the Street Maintenance Division provides maintenance on over thirteen hundred miles of roadway throughout the city. And sixty-three percent of those streets are residential, neighborhood streets. Uh, twenty-eight percent are collectors, for example, Twentieth, Twenty-Sixth Garrison, and nine percent are arterials, bigger streets, which are like Alameda, Jewel and Union. Next, we'll talk about a little bit of the budget. And it, for right now, our total budget for the Street Maintenance Division is fifteen point six million dollars. Two point nine million dollars of that is for in-house services, which includes services and supplies. Twelve point seven million dollars of that is allocated for our contractor services. Next, we'll talk about maintenance cycle. Our our maintenance cycle is something that involves a structured approach to maintaining our streets, which includes routine, preventative and corrective measures to extend pavement life. For the first time in Lakewood's history, we are implementing a five-year plan for a resurfacing program. And that's never been done throughout the city, and it's something that Brian and myself are very proud of. And uh, we we are implementing that this year. And it's going to help planning uh for other contractors throughout the city as well as our traffic engineering group. Uh, as you know, bike lanes are coming through the city, and for us to be able to plan that along with them and give them a five-year outlook, it's going to help them on their planning as well. Throughout the evening, you'll you'll listen to me talk about six maintenance programs that are utilized in Lakewood. And a few slides coming, I will kind of dive into those six uh maintenance programs that we utilize. Next, we'll talk about our contract maintenance uh where that twelve point seven million dollars annually goes uh for our contractor services. And that that money is focused on preserving the maintenance of the city's streets and sidewalks. And as you can see on the pie chart, fifty-five percent of our budget is used for our mill and overlay. Twenty-six percent is used for our concrete restoration, and fifteen percent is used for our preservation program. The first of the six maintenance programs that I mentioned earlier uh that will we that we will discuss this evening is concrete replacement. So for our concrete replacement program, three point million dollars is allocated to concrete replacement in twenty twenty-five. Concrete repair and replacement is completed on streets prior to our milling overlay. We'd like to stay a year ahead of our milling overlay program uh for our concrete replacement program, and repair involves basically removing and replacing badly deteriorated sections of curb, gutter, sidewalk and drainage crossbands. And where feasible, it also includes installing ADA curb ramps. Our sidewalk mitigation program, also known as sidewalk shaving, is what we like to call that. This process involves grinding of those elevation changes in sidewalk. And we can do this in stones that are not showing major deterioration or cracking, and it removes what we like to say trip hazards throughout the city. Uh, it's a very cost effective way of managing that without going into a full remove and replace, which is very expensive. Next, we'll talk about a resurfacing program for a second. Uh, this is the biggest allocation that we have of seven point three million dollars in twenty twenty-five. This one costs the most, but we see the biggest reward. Uh, the the contractor will come in with specialized equipment, and they'll roto-mill the top one and a half to two inch layer of asphalt. And then they'll come in and put a nice new layer of asphalt back down. And essentially, it's a brand new street, and we see that, like I said, the cost is big, but we see the highest reward. Because we see fifteen to twenty years out of that newly paved road. As long as we keep up with the rejuvenation and our maintenance on it, we can sometimes see up to twenty-five years of life expectancy out of that pavement. Next, we'll talk about crack, our crack seal program. I think everybody on the panel here has seen crack seal. It looks like the black snake that's rolling across the the street there. Uh, it's kind of just what it says, crack seal. Uh, obviously, we we put this on any cracks throughout the street. Uh, it can accelerate, basically, what it does is it protects any penetration from water. And as you know, here in Colorado, we'll get a big snow, sun will come out. We get a lot of snow melt. That runoff runs into any cracks that are exposed. And throughout the evening and nighttime hours, we see hard freezes, which obviously expands that asphalt and soil underneath it, which promotes potholing and street builder. If we can stay ahead of this with with the crack seal program, it will alleviate and stop those the moisture from penetrating into those cracks. If we can stop it at that line, as cheap as crack seal is, it is one of the cheapest and most cost effective ways of preserving our streets. That's what we want to do. And uh, when we start seeing that cracking, we jump right on it, and we get our contractor out to get all the cracks still done. Uh, it'll effectively add multiple years to the pavement's life cycle, and it's very cheap. This year, we're only you, we're spending allocating, I should say, five hundred thousand dollars uh for the crack seal program. Next, we'll talk about asphalt rejuvenation. So our rejuven- our rejuvenation uses a specialized agent uh to restore the flexibility and durability of aged asphalt. It slows down deterioration. And what the contractor does, as you can see in the photo here, they bring out a tanker truck, and they spray the semi clear penetrating oil down, and it penetrates the top sixteenth of an inch on the pavement, and it makes it more pliable. It's much like putting lotion on a dry hand. It rejuvenates that street so it can have some flexibility and be malleable uh to so it will not become brittle. And because when we start seeing that asphalt become brittle, you start seeing cracking. A lot of alligator cracking follows after that, and then our street will just ravel. Next, we'll talk about our seal coat. Uh, so you guys have seen the seal coat process, I'm sure, on some of the neighborhood streets around you. It looks like it looks much like a milling overlay, because the street turns nice. It looks like they painted black. But the seal coat protects against oxid- oxidation, weathering and minor surface distresses. It extends pavement life at a minimal cost. And right now, we've got allocated five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in twenty twenty-five for this program. And I just want to reiterate, when you guys see this sprayed down, it's at about point four thickness, so it's not a real thick product. But it does protect against oxidation and weathering, which just breaks down the pavement. And it is a very cost effective way, another tool in our toolbox, to to ex- extend the life cycle of that pavement. And at this time, I would like to turn the presentation over to Brian Harfst to talk about how we determine what streets we focus on and which ones we want to spend that funding on.
Cool. Can everybody hear me all right? Awesome. All right. Well, yeah, yeah, awesome. Great. Thanks, Justin and uh Max. And then obviously, you want to thanks uh thank the mayor and council members for giving us some time to talk about this. This is kind of my my pride and joy. Um, been here, been here a long time doing this and overseeing this program. So uh, these numbers that we're about to talk about, I really, really am super happy with and just really excited to be able to share this. Um, as Justin said, I'm going to be really talking about the the how or the, excuse me, the the when, when to apply the product, what products to apply and where to apply it, um, and how we determine that. Um, so first thing, as Justin said, first thing in Lakewood street maintenance history, um, we've been able to get a consultant on board um that has helped us use the ASTM standard, which is American Society for Testing Materials um to what we do, what we call the PCI Payment Condition Index um for each piece of our roadway. So again, what this um, what this PCI data is going to help us do is just stay above, um, keep ahead of our preventive maintenance, all these tools in the toolbox that Justin just described. Um, it's kind of the tools in the toolbox that we 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 are able to use at this time um just to stay ahead of the the major, the major failures, the larger full roadway reconstructs, which are just a astronomical price um that is put back on the constituents of Lakewood. So really, what this what this PCI data is going to help us do is is just stay ahead of it and get ahead of all the major reconstructs. Um, so, go ahead, Justin. Um, so how 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 did we collect this data? Um, so again, we hired a consultant who utilizes a 3D imaging technology. So really, it's a vehicle that drove every single road in Lakewood and uh had a camera on top. I'm sure some of you might have seen him driving around. Um, so it it captures all this. Um, several key indicators determine PCI for each road segment. Um, and when I say indicators, I'm really talking about distress types. So your potholes, your alligator cracking, your block cracking, oxidation that Justin talked about. All the things that are alleviated by these these tools in our toolbox um are evaluated. And then the payment evaluation, payment evaluation data is from intersection to intersection when the consultant is out doing this. So you could have an intersection, um intersection, intersection as small as just a stop time to stop sign in your residential areas. Or you could have a segment as large as Alameda from Kipling to Wadsworth. So it really depends on what type of roadway you're on. Um, but once all this data has been collected and analyzed, it it pops us out a PCI number um based on all these distress types. Um, so you can see kind of on the table there what PCI data is in each category, fail, very poor, poor, fair, good, excellent. Um, and we'll talk about what those numbers mean and and where they're going in the next couple of slides here. Uh, so where we're at right now, current pavement statistics in the city of Lakewood, um after this uh PCI data collection, Lakewood Road Networks revealed a diverse distribution of distress types. Um, of course, as you can see on the pie chart here, these are those distress types that we were just talking about. Um, your longitudinal cracking, your bumpiness, your potholes, your patching from contractors um that get out there or even our even our own crews. Um, one, two things I really want to point out on this slide, um after this PCI data was done. Um, the longitudinal cracking is something that anybody who's out west, down south, really noticed this. This is those big two, three inch wide cracks that are Solterra area down south. Um, those are, that's what they mean by that longitudinal transverse cracking. Um, and our in-house crews, we do a very good job of handling those most of the time. Um, but this, so this pie chart is really expected, this is what we expected. Um, the other thing I'd like to point out is the crack seal, yes, it's classified as a distress type. Um, but really only because, yes, it's covering up a crack, but we're also using it as a preventive maintenance. So I would expect to see that fifty-four percent in there, um just because we do so much of it. I mean, the the dollar used for crack seal goes goes very, very far. Um, so got all your distress types um down here in the other chart. This is kind of where all of our weighted PCI averages come out to play. Um, so your locals, which are all your residential areas, seventy-four point one, um in that good range. Collectors, even higher, um and our Collectors even higher, um, and arterials are even higher, which is phenomenal to see. So of course the weighted of each one of those, we have many more lane miles of locals than we do arterials. But that leaves us out with the weighted average of seventy five point six, um, for all of Lakewood roads, roadways. So what does, what does this mean? Go ahead, Justin. Um, what, what does that seventy five point six weighted PCI of Lakewood's road network mean? Um, well, it puts Lakewood in the seventy fifth percentile of all local agencies in Colorado, which is phenomenal, um, by my standards. Uh, being that Lakewood kind of bounces between the third and fourth largest city in the state, um, I, I really am happy to see that. Um, just means, you know, we're, we're spending our money correctly and, and getting out ahead of any major road reconstructs that we have. Which leads me into the ninety seven point four percent of roads that were above that critical PCI of fifty five, which is typically where you'd see a full reconstruct. Um, which I honestly, I've never seen a full reconstruct in my time here. Um, we've just never had to do one. Uh, which is, like I said, it just goes to show, our preventative maintenance is really doing, doing what it's supposed to be doing. The other thing Justin noted on this, but just want to reiterate again. What is the, probably the biggest bonus of getting this PCI data done for our, our department? Is, is being able to put out this five year maintenance plan. Like Justin noted, traffic engineering, all the separated bike lanes, um, the multimodal, um, direction that, that Lakewood and, and council members are, are going. This is just going to be a huge asset to be able to be out in front of, um, in front of, uh, the traffic engineering group. Um, as well as, um, our own other departments, water and sewer, we always have other projects going on. And then everybody's got to remember that, that just the twenty six water and sewer providers alone, that always have projects going on within Lakewood. So the more, the more outlook we can give them, the less opportunity we're going to have for somebody coming in. And, and deteriorating our roads right after we get done doing a milling overlay or a seal coat. Um, so yeah, like a, a, a huge bonus to be able to do that. Um, so looking ahead, um, go ahead, Justin, uh, looking ahead, where are we at? Um, current funding levels, weighted PCI will drop from seventy five point six to seventy one point nine by twenty twenty nine. Um, that's really just trending because of inflation, construction industry, we're just seeing huge increases. Um, on pretty much everything right now. Um, but it just goes, goes to show focusing on staying ahead of deterioration of our roadways. Um, by implementing this structured repair program. Um, like I said, the, the preventative maintenance is pennies on the dollar versus full reconstructs and these, these major. Hassles and inconveniences to the constituents of Lakewood, you know, we can mill and overlay a road and be done in four days. Versus having to do a full reconstruct and we're out there for two or three weeks. It just, it's, uh, it's just unfortunate. Um, but again, allocating budget is crucial to maintaining, uh, the integrity of the overall network to remain in the good range. Which again, as you've seen on that graph, seventy, seventy four point six, we're, we're right in that good range. Um, which is, which is fantastic to see, uh, from our department. I think that's it. Um, I'd like to open the floor to any questions or any comments anybody might have. I'd be happy to do my best to try and answer them.
All right. Thank you very much. Um, Councilor Mayor Guerrero, then Mayor Protamsharizai.
I just had a quick flag that I've gotten, uh, two text messages from. The public that our streaming has stopped or has gone to intermission or some other type of glitch.
Uh, thanks, counselor. We'll look into that.
Okay. Um, I had a question, just, um, I know that in Colorado Springs, the Colorado Springs Utility. Does the porcelain recycling program where they're, they do have an economy of scale where they're bringing in porcelain from across the Pike's Peak region. And they're doing, uh, so crusher fine and using that as like a road based material. I get that it may, maybe a lot for us to take on a crusher, uh, facility, but just wondering. You know, it does have us thinking a little bit about, are there other things that we've started to explore? As aggregate to help reduce that cost or bring down, um, some of the heat island that comes from like traditional asphalt stuff.
We are not currently using that process just because of cost alone. Uh, we haven't seen, uh, any increase in our budget in the last, I think, twenty years. So it's very tough on us to implement anything that's going to give additional cost to our program. So at this point, we have not pursued anything like that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, one note, I'm sorry, I'll just jump in real quick. We have, um, been in discussion, um, with ours, our, uh. Um, surface preservation, um, our, our, uh, I'm losing the word that I'm trying to find. Um, our Reclamite program, our rejuvenation program. They are trying to develop a product that is combative to the, the heat. We, we have had that conversation already, again, um, preliminary conversations with it. It's about five times the cost of what we're getting Reclamite for. So to, to weigh, you know, to do a little weighted option there is. It, it's got the same properties as Reclamite, softening the surface, it's got all that, the great properties of that. But it does, it does mitigate the heat and, um, the O two emissions, gas emissions. It, they have a product that's actually encapsulating the gas emissions. So we've talked about that. We've even gone as far as almost trying to get a pilot test done, um, on a section of roadway like Alameda, somewhere it has a lot of travel. Um, but the cost for a pilot test is like a third of the cost of what our overall program is.
Got it. I just think like one with the enhanced development menu, like this is for new builds. And so porcelain recycling is typically a lot of renovation. It's a lot of used toilets getting crushed up. But if we were to explore that at like a regional approach, just a quick search, it looks like also Fort Collins does something similar. So, you know, if that, if, if that's ever something that our peers across the county even would be interested in, like, I would be. Uh, really advocate for exploring that. Thank you.
Counselor, thanks.
Thank you. I suppose a little bit more just of a, a comment instead of, instead of a question. But my street is probably like many streets that have, um, three or four days of the week. Where garbage trucks are running up and down the street because everybody uses a different provider. And, um, so I, I imagine heavier trucks cause more breakdown in the pavement. So would you like to comment a little bit on the weight and what, what we might see? If we were able to eliminate, um, two or three of those days and just have one garbage truck going down the street. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that's, you, you, Justin, Max, you, you good? I, I would say that is nail on the head. Um, what we've been preaching for the, my, my fifteen years here is, you know, in the seventies, Lakewood's roads were all. Basically built with no Amazon packages. No, very rarely used for UPS. And like you said, very rarely used one trash service, you know, maybe two. Now we're seeing, when we're paving a road, th- there's a trash guy every single day. Um, you got Amazon deliveries, you got UPS deliveries. You know, all that is contributing to, when you have a road that was built, you know, for. Mm, moderate to light residential traffic, um, yeah, you're, we're, we're starting to see more and more failures. Um, more and more patching after milling overlay. Um, so we try to, again, that was part of the preventative maintenance, not so much a full reconstruct. But when we mill and overlay, we're trying, you know, if we're hitting dirt for fifty, eighty yards. We'll have the contractor go down, dig down, put, put the thickness of the pavement layer that should be there ahead of time. Um, and just, you know, that way we're not back in there six months. Um, but the other, the other contributing factor is the household vehicles. You know, most, most vehicles before, before my time, most people only had one or two cars, you know. Two at the most at a, at a household. Now we're seeing five, six, seven. Uh, so that, that's a huge contributing factor too.
Counselor, thanks. If I could add a comment about, uh, garbage trucks in specific. Several years ago, city council did consider and discuss the idea of going to a, a single provider trash hauler. That did not advance. One of the arguments at that time was the, the obvious benefit for fewer heavy trucks. Uh, especially on our residential streets where we tend, as Brian pointed out, we tend to spend less per unit. Uh, on our residential streets than we do on our collector and arterial streets. So that would always be a consideration if that topic were to arise. Uh, one thing that we have been able to do, uh, um, within our own program is. Uh, Justin and Brian are constantly, because we are involved with two different, um, regional and state level. Agencies, um, for asphalt pavement management. Um, we are always looking at the, at the, the asphalt mix. And the, the mix that we presently use is called SMA. It's a little bit, uh, more expensive than some mixes are. But it has superior qualities for durability, flexibility and drainage. So, I mean, that's something that we are, we were able to do without, uh, pulling, pulling trucks off the road.
Great. Thank you.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. It's been helpful to learn about all of these new pieces that you all have so much expertise in. So, thank you. Um, I had two probably brief questions. Um, one, I was curious with kind of your modeling of the kind of quality of the roads dropping down. Um, so since that's like a weighted average from, from the model, is it more like? Equally distributed worsening or is it like driven by any extremes and any things that might be more expensive to maintain? I was just kind of like curious what, um, fa- what factors were driving kind of that de- decrease in the quality of the roads.
That's a great question. And, and with our consultant that looks at these streets with the equipment that they have. They drive our program with the data that they provide us now. It's not just an inspector going out with the, oh, this looks bad, this looks bad. We've actually got real data driven decisions that are driving our funding. And I think the big point that Brian hit on was obviously with our, the budget allowance that we have. And you see that number dropping slowly. We can't pinpoint today what it's going to look like in five years. But with that modeling, it's telling us somewhere along the lines, if, if budget doesn't increase. We are going to see it trending down over that timeline. So it's driven by budget. They know our budget, our consultant, they know what our streets look like, they know what they're rated, they know what we're doing this year. What we have planned this year for restoration and preventative maintenance. So they've got all those calculations and they're providing us that data. And that's where that number comes from in twenty twenty nine, if I'm not mistaken, is what they were looking at. Uh, and that is if we don't see any increases in the budget. Obviously by that time we may see increases. We don't know today. But with, with the industry standards of the way prices are rising, uh, materials are getting more expensive, labor's more expensive. Insurance is more expensive for our contractors. That's the way it's driving right now. We're going to do everything in our, our power to avoid that decline because we want to keep our ratings up high. Cause we're very passionate and proud of that. Uh, but it's a, it's a really tough battle.
Thanks. Um, helpful to understand. And then my, um, second question. Um, for, uh, you all, I really appreciate kind of the mention of multimodal and thinking about how this plan feeds into that. Um, I'm curious just to learn a little bit more about how kind of that five year plan will play into things like the bike plan. Or, or kind of creating kind of a more, um, connected network. Cause I know part of it is like the lane narrowing and other pieces, but just kind of curious what factors you all are taking into account to, to help kind of complete that picture. Um, from bike lanes to the ADA curb cuts, et cetera.
Yeah, we're, we're working super close with, uh, traffic engineering. Uh, we, we, we've developed our five year plan. Uh, I know Jenny Gritten and Mike Whitaker have their plan. Uh, I work with Jenny at least once a week, um, trying to sit down, getting on board, whether it's snow, snow plowing, I'm sweeping up. Doing install new, new line, new lanes, um, we're, we're really working hand in hand. Now, not to say that there's going to be times where they want to put one in and hey, we're just not paving that road right now. You know, we really try to avoid that, but there's going to be times where we have that. But there's also going to be times where we can adjust our schedule. Um, unfortunately, roads deteriorate over the course of. Two, two to five to eight years more than others. So we could have a plan in place with Mike and his team. Um, and then we could have a shift where, hey, this road's actually worse. We need to get over here before we're doing a full reconstruct. Um, and he understands that and I think Jenny does too. Um, but we're, right now, we're, we're aligning really well with where Jenny wants to be. What she wants to get done and, and those sort of things. I, I think we're, I think we're on the right step. This five year plan really, really is assisting in that.
That's helpful. That just gave me one extra question, um, and then I will, uh, end my questions. Um, how does like, cause like I know, for instance, like with Google Fiber and everything going in, right? I know that like some of those changes to the roads don't impact like a car as much as they might impact like what it looks like to bike on that street. And so I'm just like curious how the quality like based by rose, road user plays into some of this maintenance, um, work that you do.
Google Fiber is a, a challenge in its own. Um, there are so many places at once, um, and they're moving so quickly. Uh, we're, we're really, like I said, the five year plan is going to assist in that as well. Um, but as far as the, the multimodal and the bike constituents. Um, it, it's really a challenge because their, their, their processes aren't, aren't what we like to call up to snuff, um, for our department. So I know that's really been a challenge. So anytime we can get them in front of our overlay and then we can cover it with a nice new mat. Is, is what we're trying to do.
Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you gentlemen for joining us to impart all of that wisdom. But, but we, we had good, two good presentations this evening, learning more about services, um, provided around our community. And not the least of which being the importance of driving around. If only we could get C dot to adopt some of these practices, say highways, that'd be great. So thank you, everybody for, all three of you for joining us and, and the work that went into your presentation tonight.
Thank you all. We really appreciate the time.
Yep. Yeah, definitely. Much appreciated.
All right. And for our, um, next presentation, we will transition over to. The Department of Sustainability and Community, Community Development Branch. And with that, I will hand the floor over to our director, Travis Parker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Two presentations down, two to go. So tonight we'll have a presentation and a discussion on the comp plan process, which has been going on for a couple of years. And then we'll have another, uh, presentation and discussion on the zoning code. Which has been developed in conjunction with the comprehensive plan. So starting tonight, I'd like to introduce Roger Waddnell and Kristi Ivanoff to present on, uh, the comprehensive plan.
Great. Thanks Travis. Can you all hear me?
We can.
They can. Okay. Uh, Kristi, maybe you can pull up the presentation. Um, we're really glad to be here. Um, this, uh, comprehensive planner, which is being, is called Envision Lakewood twenty forty. It's really been a two year plus, um, process. And we, as the, we being the staff team and really representing the, the entire organization have really strived to. To make this plan, not just, um, a planning or sustainability and community development plan. But to engage and, and make this plan represent and become the vision for the whole city. For the city organization as well as the city itself. So, um, Kristi will get into a lot of detail in terms of. Um, the outreach and, and that sort of thing, but really the overall of thinking is this is the community's plan. It doesn't come along very often, every ten to fifteen years. And one of the reasons is it's fifteen years, it does take a lot of resources to, to bring forward a plan like this. So we are going to kind of give you an overview. Some of this is pretty basic for those of you that have been involved in the plan. But we want to, you know, kind of speak to everyone that's interested and talk about where, where we are and where we're. and talk about where where we are and where we're going in in the next few months and within the next several years. So with that, um again, as Travis mentioned, there really will be two presentations and discussions. Uh, the comprehensive plan first, a presentation and discussion, and then there'll be a discussion on zoning ordinance updates as well. And we emphasize this all the time, the comprehensive plan is advisory, um, not regulatory, although in the zoning ordinance is regulatory. It's kind of basic, but it's really an important concept for everyone to uh continue to uh keep in mind. Let's go to the next slide. So what what we were, we're going to talk about um the planning process and timeline, we'll we'll kind of give an overview of the community engagement process, which again has been very extensive. Um, talk about the draft components and then um, you know, what happens uh to adoption and through adoption and into the future. So that's kind of the format of our our discussion. Um, again, the timeline, and I'll talk about this a little bit. It and again, you know, the comprehensive plan is a long-term vision. Um, some plans are, you know, ten to fifteen years. This one, really, we're looking at a fifteen-year time um timeframe. Um, and it is the vision of the the community's vision really. Um, and how that vision is obtained or 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 realized are through um overall goals, specific strategies and policies. And the comprehensive plan really is used not only by the organization, but by the community itself in, you know, as policies on land use, housing, transportation, climate action, neighborhood vitality, equity. So it's it's really wide, wide-ranging and it's and it is a big challenge really for the community to take on to to give the direction for the next fifteen years. We'll go to the next one. So really, since Lakewood is incorporated in nineteen sixty-nine, there have been four uh comprehensive plans. You can kind of see the timeframe is roughly ten to fifteen years. And the last one is in twenty fifteen, it was really Lakewood twenty twenty-five. So it's definitely um has been time to develop, develop the next plan. When we go to the following slide, I just want to kind of uh talk about the timeline. Really started um very early uh and back in late twenty twenty-two. Um, the first phase is really internal. We looked at best practices. Um, you know, what resource did a lot of outreach internally with the organization? Had what we call a listening tour of all the with the all the different departments to understand their perspective of perspectives of the comprehensive plan, how they use it, how they could use it better, how how it could be more effective within the organization. And that was kind of the first step. And then the second step um was the public is developing the plan and really um reaching out to the public. And there's an extensive public engagement. Kristy will talk about that in a bit. Um, the advisory groups were very much important in terms of um being a sounding board for a lot of the policies and a lot of the uh focus of the plan. So that that was a very active um stage of the plan that um occurred last last summer and last fall. And then uh we are kind of, we're in the phase of uh refining and adopting a plan. Plan with Planning Commission Study Session on February nineteenth of uh of this year, kick off that phase. And um, you know, we are here to, you know, to present and talk about the plan and continue to refine it through um through the adoption process. And then plan implementation, and and Kristy will talk about this as well, um, really begins when the plan is adopted and that sets the framework for how how it gets implemented over the next several years. So it's really in a, you know, something that doesn't happen very often. We really want to get it right in terms of what is the vision for the community and how do we get there? And with that, um, I'll turn it over to Kristy Ivanoff to to really talk about community engagement and some of the key concepts of the plan.
Hello. Um, again, my name is Kristy Ivanoff, and I'm a senior planner with the Conference of Planning Division. Today, I'm excited to share a brief summary of the engagement process and the draft elements of the comprehensive plan that are a direct result from all of the engagement feedback and input. So I'll first begin with a recap of the engagement process. Phase two, develop the plan, occurred throughout last year and involved ongoing coordination and collaboration with staff across the city as well as extensive community engagement, support from two consultants, MIG and CDR associates, and feedback from Planning Commission and City Council. To spread the word about the project and get as many community members involved in the process as possible, the project team attended community meetings, hosted open houses, collected feedback through two surveys, reached out to the Spanish-speaking community in Lakewood, met people where they were at through talk with events, and kept subscribers informed about updates and ways to participate through the project website, project newsletter, and all other city channels. Thank you to the thousands of team of community members who have participated in this process by sharing your stories and perspectives on font plan topics, providing specific feedback through surveys, subscribing to the newsletter, attending events, and more. In addition to these broad, community-wide engagement activities, three city council-appointed volunteer advisory groups were formed to have in-depth conversations with community members, planning commissioners, staff, and consultants about the vision, rules, and policy directions for the updated comprehensive plan. The three advisory groups were organized by topics. The first group was called Community and Quality of Life. The second group, Housing and Economy. And the third group, Transportation, Free Infrastructure and Systems. Members were appointed by the Community Engagement at Fox City Council Committee through an application and selection process in May of last year. These Lakewood residents who volunteered to serve on the advisory groups have dedicated approximately one thousand hours collectively to attend ten advisory meetings and three optional virtual sessions throughout last year, reviewing, discussing, and refining several iterations of the comprehensive plan drafts. The photo shot on this slide was taken during our November land use workshop with all three advisory groups. Uh, not every member though is shown in this picture. We would also like to extend a big thank you to each advisory member for reviewing the materials for the meetings, actively participating during the meetings, spreading the word about the project, and helping with community-wide events. Their time, thoughtfulness, and dedication to this process has ensured that the comprehensive plan drafts are reflective of the diverse perspectives of our community. And thank you also to the planning commissioners who are part of the advisory groups as well, as well as staff and consultants, CDR associates, and MIG who supported and contributed throughout the process. And this slide shows some of the engagement numbers of a snapshot. For example, eighty-five thousand postcards were mailed out with the Vision and Value Survey at the beginning of last year, resulting in over ninety-two thousand awards and feedback and forty hours of dedicated outreach with the Spanish-speaking community was also done. The comprehensive plan drafts presented tonight are a direct result of the input, stories, and diverse perspectives gathered throughout the engagement process. These drafts reflect the thoughtfulness and dedication of advisory members, staff, and consultants, and I'm excited to provide an overview of the key elements in the following slides. The comprehensive plan draft has been developed again over the last two years based on input from several groups, including the advisory group members, community members, staff, consultants, technical information such as data and existing conditions, other city plans and regulations, city councils specifically through Resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-two, and Planning Commission by participating in the advisory group process. The plan draft shared for tonight's meeting is structured around three main elements. The first element is the vision elements, which includes the vision statement, guiding principles, goals, and strategies. Second element are the future land use elements, which include the future land use map and nine future land use categories. And the third element is the glossary. Before we discuss each element in more detail in the next slides, it is important to note the difference between the current draft shared with City Council now compared to the version that will be shared as part of the public hearings. The current draft includes just the policy text of these elements, which create the foundation of the plan. The formatted draft will include the final policy text based on feedback during these study sessions as well as formatting images and supplemental narrative. The first of the foundational elements is the draft vision elements, which include the vision statement, five guiding principles, twenty-five goals, and one hundred and sixty strategies. Together, these define the vision, goals, and priorities for the city over the next fifteen years. The vision statement shown on this side is a concise ask, concise aspirational statement that articulates the desired future for Lakewood by describing the high-level vision and values for the city over the next fifteen years. The draft vision statement is Lakewood is a welcoming, safe, inclusive, sustainable, and innovative community with thriving neighborhoods, attainable housing, economic opportunity, inspiring parks, and vibrant cultural amenities. Guiding principles expand on the vision statement by outlining five core values that guide all decisions related to implementing the plan. The guiding principles provide formal statements that commit the comprehensive plan and its implementation to furthering these values, promoting that every decision and action be taken with these in mind. These principles are also reflected throughout all components of the comprehensive plan. The five principles include equity, sustainability and climate action, community wellness and vitality, opportunity and mobility, and civic participation. Stepping down to the next two levels are goals and strategies. Goals are statements of desired high-level outcomes by twenty forty. They are intended to be as clear as possible so that we, as a city, know what we are working to accomplish. There are currently twenty-five draft goals. Strategies outline specific, vetted approaches to achieve the comprehensive plan goals. Because of the interconnected nature of many goals, each strategy is designed to support implementation of one or more goal, serving as a roadmap to guide actions and decisions within the city. There are currently one hundred and sixty draft strategies. It is important to clarify that the current strategy numbering is based on the drafting process and will be cleaned up for the formatted version. For example, there are one hundred and sixty strategies, but some strategies are still currently numbered one sixty-five, one sixty-seven, one seventy, and so on. This is a result of the refinement and consolidation during the process, and the final number will be will the final version will include strategy numbers above, will not include, sorry, will not include um strategy numbers above the total number of strategy. The relationship between the goals and the strategies is also different from the last comprehensive plan. In twenty fifteen, the comprehensive plan, each goal had a set um number of action steps that were only listed to support that one goal. This updated plan uses a different approach that addresses the interconnected nature of the plan topics. This means that many of the strategies will be repeated under this, under several goals, and this is intentional. The vision elements are then reinforced and geographically mapped through the future land use elements, which is the second core element of the plan. This includes the draft future land use map and nine future land use categories. Together, these provide guidance for future land use patterns in the city and inform the zoning ordinance update, which will be the focus of the next presentation and discussion tonight. The nine future land use categories include community hub, neighborhood hub, community corridor, neighborhood corridor, low-form residential, mid-form residential, campus, production and innovation, and parks and open spaces. The community hub, neighborhood hub, community corridor, and neighborhood corridor categories provide guidance on the spatial arrangement of the mixed-use and commercial areas with the nodal hubs and the linear corridors. The scale of the market service areas is also incorporated with the use of community and neighborhood. The two residential categories, low-form residential and mid-form residential, correspond approximately to residential scale and density. These take into account the recent state laws and directly inform the zoning ordinance updates. So that was a very high-level overview of the comprehensive plan drafts. The full versions were attached with the meeting materials for tonight. Together, these drafts articulate the shared vision, values, and priorities of Lakewood, and these also closely align with the intentions and top policy priorities City Council outlined in Resolution twenty twenty-four dash sixty-two. The resolution listed six intentions for the comprehensive plan. These are repeated on this slide here. The full statement read that the updated comprehensive plan will adopt land use policies and development consistent with the following: creation of affordable, attainable, and more inclusionary housing, a greater housing diversity, incorporate mixed-use development that supports and expands more walkable and bikeable neighborhoods. The fourth, prioritize environmental and energy sustainability in land use development, prioritizing conserving water usage in both existing and future land use development and infrastructure. And the sixth, continue to make vital investments in our local quality of life by investing in our parks and open spaces. All six of these intentions are explicitly evident in the draft vision elements and the draft future land installment. For example, the two housing-related policies identified in the resolution are creation of affordable, attainable, and more inclusionary housing and a greater housing diversity. These are both directly addressed under Goal fourteen, a diverse, affordable, and accessible housing market. There are nineteen strategies that support this goal and align with these council priorities. For example, Strategy eighty-three is about diversity of housing types, and Strategy seventy-seven is about affordable housing production and preservation. In the remaining slides, I will share the next steps for the adoption process in Phase Three and the implement implementation in Phase Four. So as Roger mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, the Planning Commission meeting on February nineteenth kicked off Phase Three of this process. This phase involves a series of study sessions and public hearings with both Planning Commission and City Council. The focus of these study sessions is to get final feedback on the draft vision elements, future land use elements, and glossary before they are incorporated into the fully-formatted version of the plan. The formatted version of the plan, again, will include the final policy texts based on the feedback during these study sessions as well as formatting images and supplemental narrative. This will be shared as part of the materials submitted for the public hearings scheduled for April ninth and April twenty-third with Planning Commission and May twelfth with City Council. After the comprehensive plan is adopted, Phase Four Implement the Plan will begin, and this phase will continue throughout the lifespan of the plan. The implementation phase is an incredibly important part of this process. After the comprehensive plan is adopted, we will be developing a meaningful, useful, and efficient way to track and measure the city's progress of the plan over the next fifteen years. It is important to clarify that incorporating data and metrics into the implementa- implementation tracking for the comprehensive plan is new for Lakewood and comprehensive plans in general. The previous twenty fifteen plan only relied on one metric, how many action steps were completed. This proved to be a very tricky measurement because many of the action steps were written as ongoing, which meant that the work could not be marked as complete. So this was not a meaningful way to gauge progress, and we have learned that there is a lot of value in incorporating science-based metrics into this updated comprehensive plan implementation. But this needs to be done thoughtfully and holistically. There have been a lot of questions about implementation from survey responses, advisory group members, and planning commission. And many of these questions are directly related to what happens to the sustainability plan metrics and targets. The plan is to incorporate many of these into the comprehensive plan implementation framework, but other topics such as housing, homelessness, arts, parks and recreation, transportation, and safety, to name a few, are also a part of the comprehensive plan, and thought needs to go into what metrics could be used for these goals. Some goals and topics are more qualitative than quantitative, and we don't want to just add in metrics just to add in metrics. We need to understand what data we can consistently track, what data is staff already tracking routinely, what data is important to start tracking, what metrics are already part of other city plans. what data is important to start tracking, what metrics are already part of other city plans, and what are regional metrics related to these topics. The staff will be working through all these questions and more after the plan is adopted throughout the summer and fall. A component of the implementation strategy may also be brought forward for adoption later this year. And with that, that concludes the presentation. Thank you again to everyone who's been a part of this process and for city council for the opportunity to present.
Thank you so much to both of you, and we will start our questions off with Mayor Perterm Sharazai.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Ivanoff, I think you just answered this, but there was a question and public comment just around the sustainability metrics that have been recommended to the planning commission and maybe members of the comprehensive plan advisory groups. Is it meant that we can expect to see those metrics when the implementation plan is delivered, or will those metrics be included in the plan?
Yes, I can speak to it, and then other staff, please jump in. The plan is to incorporate those, those metrics after the plan is adopted into the implementation framework that will guide us for the next fifteen years.
Great, and sorry if I miss this, but when, so we're getting close to being ready to approve and adopt or whatever that process looks like. How far removed then would be the process from that approval to have the implementation plan? Like, are those things in parallel, I guess?
So we're already starting to have those conversations internally, but we will officially be starting once the comprehensive plan is adopted. So if it's adopted in May officially, then it'll be with begin diving into the full details of the implementation plan and annual tracking this summer and fall, potentially with bringing forward a component of that to city council and planning commission for adoption of the implementation strategy.
I, okay, so that would be a separate document that we would also take a look at, okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions, comp plan, or shall we transition to the very exciting topic of zoning update? Councillo.
Yeah, could I just ask a process question? This is an incredibly impressive piece of work, so I, thanks for the immense amount of work that went into it, which you all did your best to summarize in this presentation. Really, a lot of great stuff in here. I think it speaks for itself. To the extent that those of us in council have any, in the scheme of things, I suspect, you know, not, not major, major wordsmithing to a couple of the bullets or strategies. Are we meant to raise that now or at the public hearing in May? Or like, what is the process by which any wordsmithing from council is going to happen between now and a resolution that finalizes this in May?
I'd like to, I'll jump in on that one. I think we'd like to hear that sooner than later. If you had, if you have specifics, it would be great to hear, you know, what, what those might be rather than wait later on in the, in the process. And we can, you can bring that forward, you know, in a tag, however you'd like, but I would suggest sooner than later.
Okay, no, I appreciate that. I, I kind of suspect that, that now is, is maybe just from a process perspective, not the best because we've also, we've got a lot packed onto this agenda. We've got seventy-eight pages of bullets, and I'm, I'm a little worried if we start offering feedback now, everyone is gonna, this is gonna, this is not gonna go in a productive direction. But I'll also take your point that, that waiting until the final resolution in May is not a good idea. So what, just can, can someone either advise us now or later on, like, the, the best way to provide that feedback?
And maybe Travis can jump in, but it doesn't have to be at this meeting, but maybe within a week or two, if you had text suggestions and that sort of thing, you could bring them forward and you could, you know, look.
Agreed. If, if, if the fear is that going through it bullet by bullet tonight will make the meeting too long, I think, yeah, we'd be more than happy to take, you know, email comments from council over the, over the coming weeks.
Great, happy to do that. Happy to do that. I'm, I'm gonna name one thing that I think is, is big-picture enough to be worth naming. There's, there's a lot of great content in here that, you know, made me repeatedly sort of cheer and, and be enthused and be excited to adopt this plan. And I was gonna make one sort of macro comment, I, I think, on the goal, goal number five around homelessness and goal number fourteen around housing. I, I would love to see at least one strategy that just a little bit more explicitly and directly basically says, increase the supply of permanent supportive housing, dedicated housing in Lakewood for folks who are homeless, for folks who are unhoused. There's some strategies that are very adjacent to that, to talk about prevention, to talk about coordination, to talk about data, data strategies. It just seems, given all the conversations we have, I, it seems fitting to me to have at least one strategy in there that says, increase the supply of dedicated permanent supportive housing, dedicated housing for folks who are unhoused. And I guess in a similar vein, there are like five or six strategies under goal fourteen around affordable housing that I think are very aligned with increasing affordable housing. That's great. My two cents is I, I think it would also make sense to have a, a strategy that says, and increase the supply of housing writ large, you know, yes to the more diverse housing, that's great, that's in there. Yes to more affordable housing, that's great, that's in there. But I think just generally, increase supply of housing, right, is, because, you know, there's, there's so much evidence that that is actually one of the ways to make housing more attainable and affordable over time. So I'm happy to provide that in writing, but, but that was the one sort of big-picture thing that jumped out at me when I, when I reviewed this draft.
Okay, great. Thank you for that.
Hey, can I, I have a question for you, a process question actually relating to that. Those are beyond wordsmithing, and I'm curious about the level of appropriateness of us adding strategies because it sounded like it was really a community-centered approach to coming up with those. Are we, as councils, going through these and wanting to look at, you know, what maybe refinements we want to make? Do we want to be adding strategies, or is that ship for the community members that participated in the program?
Thank you very, I guess that was my, the other piece of my question, frankly, so thanks for making that explicitly a question.
Dark here. I think that council can, you know, certainly add whatever they choose, but I would, I would hope that we could kind of edit and refine some of the strategies to incorporate, councillor, some of the, the point that you just made. We certainly could add strategies. I, I would, I would like to take a first look at seeing if we could refine the strategy, the goals and, goals or strategies that, that are currently in the plan to, to accomplish what, what you've described, but certainly if, maybe if you could submit some, you know, more, some detailed language that would certainly help us in, in crafting that. I don't know if that answered your question. I think we'd try to look at what the existing goals and strategies as a mayor stated that has been the result of a, you know, especially a year and a half worth, worth of work and a lot of it with the advisory groups that reflected the community's vision. So if we can accomplish that with the existing goals and strategies, that would probably be the first thing, but if it's really essential to add an additional goal, that's certainly a possibility as well.
Ms. Hudson?
Um, I would just like to add that, that this really has been a product of a, a really a great deal of public feedback, and because of that, and because this is really the first time all of council, as well as the public, has heard kind of the culmination of all of that work. Depending on the rest of the feedback and the questions from the rest of council, we have options. We, if you want to delay this a couple of weeks and have another workshop where you're talking to each other, you, you can do this. Remember, this is a document that we're expecting to live for another fifteen years. So want to be really thoughtful about making sure this is really gonna stand the test of time to the extent that we can forecast that. So having said that, I know staff is anxious to get this done and start working on implementation, but if, if city council wants to have more time now that the public's really heard kind of the, the grand overview, we can do that. We can schedule a workshop or another study session or whatever you need. So I don't, I don't want you to feel like you're really rushed tonight because of the packed agenda. So for what that's worth.
Okay, thank you. So maybe what, what I'll do, we've got a number of hands up with some questions that are, I know, are not necessarily related to this. So I wrote this down. What we'll do, we'll go through all of our questions, and then we'll circle back to how council wants to move forward on this particular element, making it clear that while we're talking tonight about the comp plan and the zoning update, they are still two separate things. The timing is just very similar right now. So as we're looking at follow-up future steps, we're talking about follow-up future steps for comp plan, and then separately in our next conversation, follow-up future steps that are zoning-specific. So with that, councillor Low, did you have any more questions, or were you done? You're done. Okay, perfect. Councillor Matt Guerrero and then councillor Cruz.
I do think that my questions were related actually to the, to process, and I think for me, I have a lot more sort of concern about where we're at with zoning, but I think overall, some of my questions are about whether, like, how much we foresee any of these, the goals and strategies that are already written being shifted. I know that there's a little bit of additional work happening that, for the most part, I, it seems like we're to a point where these are the strategies that we're going to have. Again, city council might have some process to give feedback to those, but I just want to clarify that, like, the elements that we're seeing this evening in the draft are at least pretty close to the final, to what we expect to be in the final formatted version. You had that, like, screen with comparing the elements, and it seemed to be what you were saying, but I want to just make sure that that's true.
I can jump in and answer that, yes. That, thanks for that question. So what we shared with you tonight is like the Word document raw version of the text. And so what we're planning or what we're actively preparing for the public hearings is a fully-formatted, designed version that has, that integrates, you know, nar, some supplemental narrative, and, you know, there's gonna be table contents, and there's gonna be different chapters, and, and then also images, so.
Great. That, that did seem relatively clear, but that's been like the majority of questions that I've been getting on process is kind of on both zoning and comp plan, like those components. And I, I think that I would say, like, both with the, the comprehensive plan and with the zoning plan, I'm really interested in how we can create like a process where we can have our questions or suggestions be as transparent as possible for all of us councillors and the public. So whether that ends up being sort of like one process, like whatever makes sense on the staff and logistical and building end is okay with me. But I think to the point that Mayor Strong brought up, councillor Low's suggestion is perhaps a good one, but to me is actually significantly different than any of the strategies that I see currently written. So that is one example that if that sort of made its way through as like wordsmithing or reviewing or editing versus real policy discussion and voting, I think that's actually relatively controversial. And so I think that all of us probably have some, some similar levels of notion. And so whatever that process is, I want to make sure from the final version with the images, with the right page numbers, et cetera, so that the public, it's easy for them to follow along with us. It's easier for us to follow our own thinking that we're able, I'm thinking probably something somewhat like what happens with the budget, where we're able to submit those questions and those answers are, are posted or, and/or sent out in some way, as, at least for the larger ones, the larger points of discussion. And then overall, I also wanted to just share, like, I think this amount of public engagement and work is really incredible. And I know particularly from a Word Two perspective, I've gotten a lot of really positive feedback from people who, this is something that they ended up being really seriously involved in and tracking as one of the first things that they were really seriously involved in and tracking within the city. And I think that that's a wonderful sign in terms of the level of accessibility you all made, particularly when you started that a couple of years ago, and the way that you sort of built those, you know, representative champions and local experts up within that process, were able to give enough information for meaningful input from people who definitely know, like, what their experiences are. But it can sometimes be hard to navigate a, a complex process like this to actually make their voices heard. So I, I've just heard a lot of really positive things about that whole process, and I want to say a huge shout out and thank you. I know that this was, is long and ongoing and also really different than the last time, as you talked about this evening and I've talked about before, and I'm, and I'm really excited about it. I think I have more substantive questions on the, in the zoning component that like sort of builds from the comprehensive plan process. But in that spirit, I do want to echo, I think, what Mayor Strom was, was saying at least a bit, or maybe I'm just putting a finer point for my own use, which is that amount of public input, that amount of stakeholding, I will do my best to have lots of questions, but not as much specific feedback as I maybe would otherwise in an effort to really like trust the community-driven process here and the community-driven vision that we are hopefully resulting in. Thank you.
Ms. Cruz?
Thanks, and definitely want to start by echoing what my co-councillor and I know probably all of us will share that I have really appreciated seeing this, you know, evolve over the last year, ten years. And I feel like the way you all have done this has been very responsive, and, you know, the feedback I've been getting about folks who are involved in the work groups and folks who have been engaged comes from lots of people who don't always agree on things, but can agree that they've felt well-engaged in many parts of this process. And so, and that is truly a feat, and so I do want to celebrate that alongside all of my councillors and, and you all. And so I'm really excited to, to kind of see where the rubber's meeting the road. And so just like a couple of high-level questions, and we'll follow up with more like concrete feedback on some of them. So I want to get a little bit more clarity, like, I totally appreciate that the intention and agree with the intention that some of this, like, the strategies and the goals don't always, like, don't align with, like, some, all, like, they align with multiple categories of work. And I also think that not having them totally tracked to a overarching goal can, can make it hard to kind of see where in the vision some of these pieces are, particularly since there are so many goals. And so I'm kind of wondering what, what the vision is for making it so, making it understandable for folks where some of these goals are, are fitting into this larger vision.
I can, I can try and. Yeah, I can jump in. Well, first of all, we will, as part of the, the next phase of the plan, we will have a section on strategies that will list the strategies numerically, and it'll also show which goal they are listed under as either a primary strategy or a supporting strategy. But I do think that that'll be helpful in kind of tracking, like, where the, where the strategies are showing up in the different goals, and that will feed into our implementation framework in the next phase. The other piece I wanted to mention or just reiterate is that each, under each goal, there are a list of, strategies are organized by primary, and they're also organized by supporting. So the primary strategies are typically the strategies that originated under that goal. So we could kind of consider those as being like the main strategies. But then the supporting strategies kind of bring in strategies from other goals to show that interconnected, the nature of these topics. And so we will be, I think your question is related to implementation and how we're gonna track it.
Sort of, but honestly, mostly just to understand where the vision meets the goals, meets the strategies, both primary and supporting, like, it, within the document, and then I think that that leads into the implementation piece.
Like, where the vision statement, like, where that comes into play with the, the goals and the strategies, or?
Yeah, like, I think, at least for me, with, I think, what we're at, what, like, twenty-five goals, just like, and then there's the great, I think, vision statements, and so I, I, I found myself, it just wanting to kind of better understand where all of these pieces fit in and how the goals kind of fit together within some of these larger vision categories, and then that's kind of multiplied by the strategies. And so sort of like how all of the, the parts become the whole is maybe my, my question with regard to the structure of the document.
Maybe I can talk about that a little bit.
Maybe I can talk about that a little bit, you know, there's a vision, vision statement. And then the guiding principles really are, as Christie mentioned, kind of a, a guiding for all of, all of the goals and strategies. They kind of fill, you know, their important concepts to deal with. Kind of keep in mind when writing the goals and when writing the strategies. And then getting to the twenty-five goals. One of the, one of the things that, you know, we saw immediately when we started this process is how interrelated things are, you know, let's just say homelessness. It's something that the Parks Department deals with, something that the Housing Division deals with. So, you know, goals and strategies and implementing them are interrelated. So, you know, we saw that at the beginning and it was very, very evident. And as Christie mentioned, it's different than the last complaint, where it was more linear. Here's a goal, here's a strategy. But I think under the goals, I'm hoping I'm describing, helping this out a little bit. The primary strategies are, are, are key. The secondary are important as well because they show the connections. They show the connections between, you know, the court, for example, enhanced corridors and affordable housing and to really show those connections. So I think we're going to have to, when developing the implementation of process to really take a close look at all of them. But I think we would probably start with the key strategies that fit under the goals and then to look under the related ones. Does that answer your question at all? You know, I want to, I want to try, I'm trying to tie that whole thing together a little bit.
Totally. And, and I think maybe, and I'll keep, I'll keep thinking on this because I, I totally get and, and see where the like not mapping all of these things linearly, like leads into making this like work with how the city actually works and with how people experience things. And I know I'm going to get questions of, okay, you have this vision for sustainability. What does that mean? And like, and while I, like, so, and so which goals is that? And I think that some of that is obvious and some of that is less obvious. And so I, I'm just kind of trying to think about how we paint this, this picture for, for, for folks. And, and so maybe I'll just continue to, to think on like what might be helpful in doing that with the organization.
And just to add one more thing with the implementation, I think we need to be, and Christie mentioned this as well too. We need to be really thoughtful and what, what's meaningful to measure. How to measure it and what resources we have to, to do that. So that's why it really needs to be a thoughtful approach. That can't, some things can't be measured at qualitative. And that's, that's totally appropriate as well. But that's where we need to put a lot of thought into, you know, the implementation and, and what's going to be measured and, and, and how it's going to be measured as well. So that's kind of talking about the next step.
I can also jump in and add one more thing to, that maybe gets to your question. It sounds like you're referring to the guiding principles, which we have had questions as the governor to profit and with advisory group members. The guiding principle, so it starts off the vision statement and that's like the four that really drives all the other elements. And then we go to the, the guiding principles and there are five of them. And these are, we could consider these as lenses. Like we can look at, you know, equity is, is one guiding principle. We, in, in every single goal and potentially strategy, we can look at them, we could look at equity as a lens. Same with the other four guiding principles. You know, sustainability is another guiding principle, sustainability type action. And so the guiding principles are more lenses. So they're not going to be like, they could be, they could apply to all of those old strategies. And that will probably be a little bit more evident once we start working on the implementation structure. The, and then we go down to the goal level, which are in some ways more detailed extensions of the vision statement as they relate to their various topics. So these are kind of vision statements for the various topics. And then and then we drop down to the strategy bubble, which are going to be a little bit more specific and the most specific within the, the set of the video.
Yeah, that's, thank you. I, I appreciate you all going on that journey with me. I, I'll ask one other question and then I'll go back to the back of the line and answer my other questions. But I am curious, I think when I was listening to kind of the, the planning commission meeting and also I think relates to the, the public comment that we got on Lakewood speaks. I think there is a kind of ask, it seemed like from the planning commissioners, that I would also share for some of the goals, particularly I think related around homelessness, around sustainability, I would add around transportation. Thinking like if we're, if we're going to make, you know, these, these broad goal statements, you know, do we want to consider eliminating homelessness rather than reducing homelessness, thinking about, you know, going to net zero in our emissions by twenty fifty, right? Like all of those pieces rather than some of the kind of more moderated goals around some of these things that folks have expressed in the community. And so with that, and then also I think related to like reducing crashes, I would argue for, you know, like trying to eliminate deaths. And maybe some of these things aren't fully attainable. I don't know. We could have kind of a debate around whether we want to put more broad statements or, or things that we think are super attainable. But I, I want us to, to think kind of, you know, to some of those more high-level goals on those and would advocate for that. And I know that that was something that came up in that conversation, planning commission. So I just wanted to elevate that.
Counselor Nicester.
Thank you. Can you guys hear me? Yay. Figures. Everything worked all, all day long and then I get on the call and, thanks. And Christie, all I can say is from when you came to the ward meeting last year and then probably went to a million of them, how many sticky notes you boiled this down to this document is pretty impressive. Probably millions of sticky notes. I hope you recycled them, but yeah, a lot of work. I got a couple, well, I got a bunch of questions, but some of them were centered around the zoning amendments, but I guess my question is, well, one of them was the future land use map. Is there, how do I phrase this appropriately? Is there going to be a mapping or a tie-in or something where we're using the zoning changes kind of overlaid on this map or to clarify, you know, some of the descriptions on the future land use because people are finding this confusing. And there's not a lot of clarity in their minds about that. Does that, first of all, does that make sense?
I can jump in and then maybe Travis and Roger can also help. So the question is, is there going to be more clarity around the future land use map categories? Or there's confusion around those categories?
Yeah, and I guess how those categories tied to zoning. Because based on what I can see, there's some proposed significant changes and I'm not sure that people are tracking that.
Christie, I didn't know if you wanted to start, but yeah, I mean, the categories we've tried to define sort of, the land use categories, we've tried to define what those are. There's, you know, there's the low scale residential, the mid-rise residential, and then all of our traditional mixed use. We are in the process of, you know, creating a zoning screen that that relates to that feedback that we got from the community in terms of the residential sizes. So we'll, I think that's a better discussion for us to have, yeah, when we have those two documents to, to bring to you together, if that helps.
Okay. And then I guess I just want to understand how going forward, how do we ensure once the comprehensive plan is approved and zoning changes are approved? How do we ensure the tie-in of the comp plan and some of the information that's out there is kind of adhered to when we're making decisions on developments and things like that? Because like I, I, I read through all this and like I said, I got a number of questions, but I'm going to document all of that and send those to you. But, you know, even on the previous development dialogue committee, there are quite a few items on this from twenty, what, twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen period, I think. That, I guess the expectation was that that would be incorporated into the comp plan and, and the zoning. And there's a lot of items on here that weren't. And I just, I just want to make sure that moving forward, that these two are kind of working together.
I, I think that's a great question, counselor. And that's really a function of why we're here bringing both of these things as part of one process. The, the whole goal of a zoning, a set of zoning regulations is to implement the, the community's goals in development, right? And the, they need to walk hand in hand. Our zoning needs to match both our goals and our strategies in the comp plan. And that was very deliberate that we've, that we're bringing these as one package and walking them through the process of planning commission and, and city council together. So that we don't get to a place where we approve a comp plan that everybody thinks is great right now. And then we slowly over the next year or two, develop zoning regulations that either get watered down or get changed and don't really match what our specific goals are in the comp plan. So we, you know, we very deliberately brought them to you together and, and, you know, our plan is to move them through this process together so that, that there is a close tie between the, the community's goals and what is in our, is in our regulations.
Okay. All right. Thank you. It helps.
Thanks, Mayor. Let me just take one other quick run at, at a process clarification. I, I took the liberty of just looking up our, our city charter. I, I see in, in section nine point one, it says, "The planning commission shall make and adopt a comprehensive master plan for the physical development of the city, including amendments thereto and periodic updating thereof, subject to the approval of the city council." So I guess I'm wondering, I mean, just, and I'm only asking this to try to clarify the process moving forward. I, I, it seems like maybe looking at this, taking another look at this, both the charter and, and the ordinances. Is it the case that the deal is the planning commission can make amendments and then the final plan is presented to city council for sort of a yay or nay without amendment? I'm just asking that because I think it would give us a little bit more clarity on the process over the next month or two.
That, that may be a more legal question. Yeah, traditionally we've, we've used those words that the planning commission adopts and the city council approves what they adopt. It's, you know, it's different than the normal course of action where the planning commission makes recommendations, right, to the, to the city council. I don't think that precludes the city council from being involved in the final product and even making changes to the final product, but that may be more a question for the legal team.
Okay. Thanks. I, I, I think that's, I do think that's sort of a threshold question, whether, you know, the, the question of whether, you know, substantive, meaningful changes at this point to this document. And I, I just want to reiterate this again. I'm, I'm focusing on, you know, how do we make changes? But, you know, from my perspective, ninety-five percent of this is fabulous. Well, and reflects an incredible amount of stakeholder and great input from the community. So thank you. And thank you for all the hard work that goes into it. Thank you for the thousand hours of volunteer time. I do think it will be useful to figure out, like if, if, at this point, can counselors make, you know, suggest substantive edits? Or is the process that when the planning commission does the final hearing, that's where any amendments go? And if so, I think sort of to the extent there are changes that will kind of focus any changes on the planning commission where final amendments could be made. So I, I do think that would be a useful thing to clarify sooner rather than later.
We can get clarification on that, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Cruz.
Thanks. Just two things I wanted to, to raise. One, I, it's really helpful to hear about the list kind of of strategies and like marking those to pieces. Because frankly, I think a lot of my, like, my feedback is like some strategies that I think are in some categories could also be in others or some combination of that, which I can only imagine how much of interesting matrices gone into what we got. So I think that that list is going to be super helpful. It was just one, one thing I wanted to say. And then the other piece, which I know is probably a hard question, but very curious for you all who have like been, you know, so central to this process throughout the whole thing. Some, something I kind of walked away from, like reading this and then kind of going back to the twenty twenty-five vision plan. Is like, I, I kind of wonder like what, what would you all see from this process is coming out as like any of the landmark goals or the like, the like, Lakewood is blank, like one sentence, three adjectives coming out of this, you know, I think like seeing the, the former comprehensive plan, you know, there's pieces about like unique identity, all of those things. But like, I'm, I'm interested in what that means. And I think like the vision statement is awesome. And like, that could be a lot of cities' vision statements. And so I'm kind of curious, like what, what, what in like how we're thinking about twenty forty makes like our vision of Lakewood unique. And so I'm just like curious. You don't have to answer that on the spot. I know that's like a, a broad question, but I'm just curious.
I can start. First, we have received that feedback from the advisory group members that the vision statement could be applied to any city. And that is typically the case for a lot of these comprehensive plans. We but we have, we are addressing that through the formatted version of the plan, which will unveil. We're going to do, we, we already have this actually done. It's a, an illustration of what these components of the vision statement mean for Lakewood specifically. And so that will be a part of the, the fully formatted plan, the vision statement with an illustration around. The other piece to your question, I think, will really come with the implementation tracking. So, and the recording of it. So we will pull out, you know, very specific stories and examples of projects and, you know, ways that we're implementing the, the golden strategies in the implementation over the next fifteen years. And so it'll really become very specific to Lakewood through that process.
Maybe one of the things, just reflecting back to the previous comprehensive plan, it was a different process. It was more of a steering committee and there were a lot of, a lot of good ideas, but almost so many ideas that some of them couldn't be implemented. Lakewood doesn't have a water dis, you know, it's minimal level of influence on some things like schools and, and things like that. So I think with this plan, the intention, and I, I agree with Christie, you know, to make it more unique to Lakewood, and we heard that a lot. And we're trying to, but I think the, the thinking was, there are a lot of different views too, we, we received continually, especially in the steering, in the advisory groups. Not everyone agreed, you can, didn't get, it's not possible to get consensus on everything. And that's maybe not, not essential. It's, it's more to get what's important to the community. But I think the focus was more upon what kinds of things that Lakewood could, the community could influence. And we could get, you know, that really reflected the community and then the action steps that could really, and the strategies that could really be something that could could be implemented, I guess. And that's, that'll be the next step. Again, it's, I'm not sure I answered it, but I, I think that was a challenge to balance all of these community views and come up with a kind of a cohesive vision that wasn't, that was more unique to Lakewood. Whether we achieved that or not, I think we just strive to, strive to do that.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, and I think there are so many ways, I think, of like how this is reflective of moving a lot of things that I know I've heard community forward. And so I think you all have achieved that. And I think your answers really speak well to how do we, how do we make these goals, which are probably goals in a lot of communities specific to our community. But I'm just like curious in, in terms of how this moves forward, like I live in Lakewood, one of the cities in the Denver metro area. Like what, what, like what is that vision of, of what that like? I live in Lakewood, one of the cities in the Denver metro area, like what what like what is that vision of of what that like I did citizen identity is in twenty forty? I and again, like, there are so many people with so many different ideas, and so maybe there's no way to align that or in a way that's like we can capture in this. But I think, I don't know, it it could be helpful as like a a North Star or in thinking about how you all are bringing this together. So I'll just I'll just leave it with that. So thanks for taking on the question.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Um, so as far as moving forward goes, I want to be very clear again that we are talking about two different things tonight. We're talking about comprehensive plan, and we're moving over next to go into zoning code update. So I am asking you these questions based specifically on comprehensive plan. What we determine we want next steps to be for zoning can be different. So as far as the comprehensive plan goes, um, that will be passed by resolution. So the public hearing actually is in alignment with the um original, you know, the first time that it shows up on our agenda, it would not be part of the consent agenda. It would be separate, would include a public hearing. So does counsel feel that the information that we got regarding the comprehensive plan is enough for us to move forward? It will go to planning commission twice. Planning commission will then it send us something. At that point, when planning commission sends us something, we do still have the ability to modify it or we just don't approve it. Um, that is, those are our options. So it's we're not solidified and having to pass exactly what planning commission brought forward. I think, Counselor Lo, that was part of your question. So we have two planning commission hearings coming up in April. As of right now, I believe that this is scheduled to come back to city council for the resolution on May twelfth. My question is, do we feel like for the comprehensive plan only that process, those next steps feel good, like we're ready to move through that? Or do you feel that we need a separate additional study session on the comprehensive plan, not zoning? Counselor Matt Guerrero.
I think for me, I do not need another study session that's just about the comp plan. I would say that it is likely that we will have questions related to the comp plan when we if we do a zoning ordinance, specific workshop or study session. And so as much as it makes sense to have the right people like available or on call for that. Um, and then I think what I said earlier about wanting to think about if there's larger suggested changes or um you know, more content specific questions, like some type of process ahead of that date in May would be for me sufficient. And I think of a a way to get actually better, more concise information and with like less coordinating of schedules and things. Um, so that would be my suggestion, and I would fulfill my needs on this particular aspect.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. I I personally would appreciate another joint so study session and thinking about both the comprehensive plan and the zoning plan because I I do think that they're really intertwined in ways that are going to continue to become clearer as like the level of information becomes more concrete. Um, and I know from listening to the planning commission hearings, I think a lot of the the questions and feedback I have, I know are things that other folks have said. So it's it's less that I like I I I it I know a lot of things are going to continue to evolve and and go well with that, but I would personally find it helpful also because I like totally appreciate that the implementation pieces are going to come after this. But without having like a more concrete understanding of that timeline and and like what that process is going to be, um, I don't feel super comfortable like moving moving forward without like a a more concrete id- idea of that. So personally, I would appreciate uh another time for us to get together with that study session workshop format doesn't matter as much to me, but I I personally think that that would be helpful, particularly since we're missing two counselors tonight too.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Nystrom.
Um, I think Sophia prob- or Isabel said that much more eloquently than I would be able to, but I agree, and and I guess really at the crux of it, you know, the vision elements and and a lot of how that's laid out. I'd be more comfortable with all of that if there was more clarity again around the land use map and then category descriptions because to me, there's, you know, we've got the intent, the example uses, and then there's a lot of um, I don't know, inconsistencies or disparities in terms of you know, height, height limits, and then, you know, it says changes may need to be uh may be needed for the to implement the comprehensive plan surrounding current existing zoning correspondence. And and I I would just like to have an opportunity to get more clarity on those particular topics. So um, I'm in favor of another session. Discussing.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Sinks.
Yeah, thank you. Um. I'm I'm really not very in favor of having a study session dedicated only to the comprehensive plan. Um, to Counselor Nystrom's point, I wonder if we could also include the zoning along with any questions and and combine them, understanding that they are two separate documents, but they are closely related. So um, I think Counselor Nystrom's question and a lot of our questions would come from from more of the zoning. So of course, we haven't heard that presentation yet. So um but anyway, that's my viewpoint, not such a one and done, one one session on the comprehensive plan, but kind of combine them to um maximize our time. Thanks.
Mayor Protencher, as I.
Yes, thank you. I would um agree with my co-counselor and um I just, I this is like meant to be a community-driven process, and so to have counsel um you know, art dedicate another study session or workshop around the comp plan feels a little challenging because we shouldn't be coming in at this point. Like, this is the same comprehensive plan presentation we received a few months ago. So if there were substantive changes, it feels like that should have happened previous to to today and to this week. That being said, like the zoning stuff that we're getting ready to talk about is like nowhere near baked. And so I agree that we need a little bit more time like I'm not, and I know that's not that we're getting prepared to have that conversation, but I would reinforce um Counselor Nystrom's point is that there is still like a lot of questions on that. But my questions are on the zoning and that I think like the comp plan feels very close to being done. And we should be able to map those two things together. That would be my interest in a workshop. But if we are going to spend more time talking about the plan and where we are and how we got here and how many engagement points, no offense, I think you all did a beautiful job tonight. But that information is is known, and it's not a great use of our time. And so I would really advocate that we focus our efforts on zoning.
Did you call me?
You do have your, yeah.
Oh, yes. Wasn't sure. Yes. And just to be clear, in case I didn't say this clearly, I I think we should talk about them together. And I and I do think it's more just about where the rubber is meeting the road of how this should how these pieces are moving forward and how they're connected rather than seeing the journey. Um, so would would agree with all of those pieces. And I would say like this is significantly more information than we've gotten on these pieces to this date. And I don't necessarily think like it's within our purview to um make a lot of changes. But at the same time, I do think making sure that the vision statements and the supporting strategies are aligned in the best way possible, and also listening to folks who are in those meetings who are continuing to suggest changes on that, I think, is important. And so I I do think it they should go together, but I think that there needs to be conversations on both.
Thank you. Counselor Lo, um, what are your feelings as far as another study session? It looks like we're landing on either no additional study session for comp plan or doing another study session that would be combined at comp plan zoning, but really more zoning, but where is the where the two intersect? So there's a little more clarity on that.
Yeah, no, I appreciate the question, Mayor. I um I haven't raised my hand because I'm I'm honestly a little bit torn on the question. I I I agree that with the the point that the the most important thing here at this point is having a sit down to work through the text of the zoning rewrite once we have the draft text, right? I I think, and to me, that feels like a workshop. Um, and I I take the merit of protest point that like that is the piece that is going to be like the heavier lift as we think about our workload over the next month. Um, so I would particularly in in part just bow into like the realities of the calendar and not wanting, you know, all of the work that has gone into the comp plan and not wanting to sort of delay things further. I I don't feel like we need a separate um comp plan sit down. I I would be comfortable combining them. Um, I mean, I think the reality of that decision is like if 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 they're together, like a lot of our time and effort is necessarily going to go into wordsmithing the zoning rewrite, which is the next piece. I'm comfortable with that. I mean, I I do think it would be helpful to just get clarity on to the extent that there are any final changes to the wording in the comp plan, like what is the best way for counsel to provide that input? I think having that like a little clarity on that sooner rather than later would be useful. And if the answer is we should, there's some process to send in suggestions, great. If the answer is it's basically going to happen through the planning commission, then I think that's just useful for us to know. If the answer is it's going to get resolved in a um in a joint zoning rewrite comp plan sit down, we probably should allocate quite a bit of time for that. Um, because that that sounds like a lot of hours to me to do both in one sitting. So that was a bit of a muddy answer. I think the bottom line is I'm fine as long as we have a a a a an opportunity to sit down and look at the zoning rewrite. Once we have a a full draft of the ordinance, I'm fine with whatever you and the and my colleagues in council decide about uh how we want to handle the comp plan.
So it in I my my opinion is I don't think we need a separate study session just based on the comp plan. However, I can see where there are a number of questions around the intersection between the two. So I think it could make sense where we're having a study session that is really ultimately more on the zoning side of things because we haven't gotten there yet tonight, but I know there's a lot of questions there. Um, and I don't know if this question might be for Mr. Parker or Ms. Hudson. Like, do we feel like it's implementable to have a study session where it's probably really heavier zoning, but at least we have some comp plan experts um to help us understand how one meets the other? Or do we feel like this would be two separate study sessions? Or one workshop, one study session?
No, we we think that makes a lot of sense to have a combined study session that's primarily focused on the on the zoning, but but touches on the relationship between the two. Um, a- as I said before, I think it makes the most sense to keep considering these things as a package.
Okay. Oh, with that, um, does everybody like that idea of moving forwards? We're talking about a workshop or a study session that would be probably really geared more towards zoning, but giving some some, you know, of the understanding and the alignment between one and the other as they are very much coming forward as a two-package thing. Do we all have agreement that moving forward that way looks good, feels good? Okay, all right. Um, then do you guys as staff have any more questions for us? Do you need any more clarification on the comprehensive plan piece before we transition over to zoning? Nope. Okay, perfect. Thank you, all of you. Um, so then with that, Mr. Parker, I'll hand the floor back over to you to introduce zoning.
Thank you, Ma- uh, Madam Mayor. Um, so our final subject of the night, of course, is a preview of changes to the zoning ordinance. Um, we are about two weeks away from releasing uh the zoning ordinance, and we'll talk about next steps at the end, including uh open house, additional open house and additional outreach um as well as, you know, next steps for planning commission and city council. But tonight, um, we've got our consultants here who are going to introduce you to a lot of work that they've done as background um for some of the large changes that are being considered in the code. We we necessarily for time in in this context won't get too deep into a lot of the changes that are going on. But you're going to learn a lot about the background work that's come in and some of the big changes that are coming. So with that, I will turn it over to Samantha Suter and Peter Park, the consultants that are working on our zoning code update.
Thanks, Travis. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, um, and I'm assuming you can see my screen. Okay. Um, thanks for letting us join uh your meeting tonight. Um, just to give you a brief update on an overview of what we're going to talk about today, there there are three main points we want to touch on. Um, the first is just to uh ground this conversation in what we're calling the code update guidance. Uh, what are the foundational uh bodies of work and thought that are going into the work that we're presenting today? Um, then my colleague, Peter, will talk about the code update approach. That's the bulk of our presentation tonight. And then we'll touch on next steps. Um, so I I know you guys have a lot of opinions about that, just listening to your last conversation. Um, so to touch first on the purpose, uh, what are we doing here? What are we talking about? Um, our charge is to help the city of Lakewood uh to produce an an innovative, user-friendly zoning and development regulations that will implement your updated comprehensive plan, address contemporary development and zoning needs, and something that's easily understood by staff, the public, the development community. We'll touch on more of these specific goals throughout the presentation tonight, but to highlight a few of these, um, we want to make sure that the code is in alignment and is in service to the comp plan. Um, so that's something we want to make sure is very clear tonight as we discuss the relationship between the plan and the code. Um, we also are charged with reducing and simplifying the number of zone districts um throughout the city uh and to remove some of the restrictions on the residential density. Uh, to do that, we want to make sure we're increasing housing opportunities throughout the neighborhoods um and just overall simplifying the code uh so people understand what is uh expected of them and to make sure that uh increasing housing supply is uh easy and streamlined, um but also making sure that it's something that is compatible to the existing neighborhood character. Um, let's see. So in the fall, you guys adopted um some values that are informing our work. Um, so to touch on those three first, uh, we acknowledge and understand that uh we want to uh create something that uh promotes the affordable, attainable, and more inclusionary housing throughout Lakewood. Uh, the second uh value is to increase mixed-use density in many areas of the city, uh especially those areas that are walk walkable and bikeable. Um, and then we also want to prioritize environmental um sustainability, conserving water use. Uh, what that means for the zoning code in particular, um and touching on the priorities you adopted in October, uh, we understand that that means a zoning rewrite that is bold, imaginative, and embraces innovation uh and that it's reflecting the diversity of needs for the full city of Lakewood. Um, what that means in terms of specific strategies uh is that we're going to target what we're calling the uh missing middle housing, uh which means that we'll uh create a code that uh allows for what we call naturally uh occurring affordable housing and supports what we call market rate housing. Um, another priority is to shift away from uniformly mandating single-family zoning, uh legalizing some of the historic building patterns and increasing choice throughout the city. Another foundational element that we're considering is just updates to state law. Um, so there are four bills um that are listed here on this. So there are four bills that are listed here on this slide that we're taking into consideration. And we want to make sure that the code update is consistent and compliant with the state mandates that the state adopted this past year. The four categories of the state laws are accessory dwelling units, making sure that the city will permit ADUs between 500 and 750 square feet. There's a few other restrictions there that the state has outlawed. So we want to make sure that we're compliant there. There's also prohibition to minimum parking requirements, increasing density around transit-oriented communities, and then some changes to the residential occupancy. As part of the comp plan, city staff has talked to the community about their feedback and how the community wants to see their vision reflected in the code update. So the two main pieces we want to highlight from those conversations are that the community talked about this idea of removing or relaxing unit distinctions in the residential use category. So rather than talking about a two-unit or a three-unit home, the community expressed a desire to talk more about the size, the shape of the building, less about how that building is being used internally and how many units are reflected in that structure. As you were just talking about, the future land use map as part of the comp plan provides some guidance that we're integrating into the code update as well. So we're basing some of our recommendations on this idea of low form and mid form residential categories, and we're using that to talk more about the existing context. We want to make sure that the code update and the zoning district calibration is based on that existing context. So the code can preserve what is special about Lakewood's neighborhoods, but allow this contextually appropriate evolution and increase in density. So Peter will talk a bit more about our approach, and then we'll hear from you as we continue this conversation.
Hi, everyone. Thanks again for including us in the conversation, and we're happy to be here. And it sounds like you all want to talk about zoning, so hopefully this would be a good start. And I think I just, I guess I would just like to reiterate, right? Certainly, the zoning and the plan are different things. But as Sam mentioned, the zoning work that we are working on is based on the updated plan. The future land use map is a big part of that in terms of how we calibrate the zoning, as well as where some changes to zoning would occur in line with the plan. Right? So the zoning isn't determining things. It's the plan that determines your future, and the zoning is just one tool of many tools that you had. You know, the earlier presentations today about your infrastructure, right? You implement plans through your infrastructure investments and parks and open space and a number of other things. So I just want to make sure that we reinforce that zoning is just one tool in the toolbox. It's not the only tool. It's, but again, it is highly dependent, and it takes a direction first from the plan, right? And so we just want to discuss tonight some initial aspects. It sounds like we'll probably be having another study session so we can get deeper into details. But in terms of the approach that we've developed along with staff on addressing the known issues in the code and what we've identified. And so there are five things that we want to talk about tonight. The first is how we are approaching the calibration of standards for development based on, as Sam mentioned, the existing residential context. The plan identifies future changes in all parts of the city. And from our experience, you know, changes, it's not always easy to work through. And so the code work that, in our approach, is really to understand first, what are the patterns of development of different neighborhoods? And how does your current zoning support or not support those patterns of development? And what patterns of development does your future plan, your new updated comprehensive plan, provide that we can use for guidance for change? The second is simplifying the residential use regulations. Third is, how do we increase the compatible housing options in residential areas, both in terms of diversity and in terms of overall capacity, what the zoning allows? And also, how do we simplify and update the zoning regulations for mixed use districts? And last, improving the format and the usability of the code. The, one of the challenges in the code today, I mean, it's been updated, but there are ways that we're looking at to make the code more user-friendly, more clear, and more accessible to more people. So in terms of understanding, how do we calibrate standards to existing residential districts? Similar to your mixed use zones today, you might remember that your mixed use zones are organized by suburban mixed use and urban mixed use. So those different distinctions between areas that are more auto-dependent and more auto-oriented versus areas that have potentially more pedestrian orientation and more walkable. So in the same way, we're using that idea that's already embedded in your zoning code and extending it to the residential zones and the organization of the residential zones. And so to do this, we do a lot of analysis, looking at the street and block patterns, right in the northeast corner on the borders of Denver. There are more urban grid and high connectivity of streets and blocks. And as the city grew over time, and automobiles became more ubiquitous, that affected the patterns of development. And so we do this sort of analysis to understand the physical patterns of the streets and blocks, the age of housing, and different eras of housing, and what kind of houses were built in their form and character, as well as looking at the existing zoning and the relationship to those, as well as looking at the lot structure and the sizes of lots and the sizes of buildings on those lots. All of those are the parts that shape our perceptions of neighborhoods and the different conditions. So in the urban residential areas, we first look at the blocks and the lots and the buildings. And as I mentioned earlier, this is where parts of the city that you have kind of more of a rectilinear grid, the blocks are smaller. There's higher, what we describe as intersection density. So if you take a given area of land, one acre of land, there are a lot more street intersections. So there are a lot more routes and a lot more options for how you move through the neighborhood. And in our analysis of looking at the city, about 30% of the residential areas are what we might describe as an urban context, and those are areas that were typically built prior to 1960. And they look and feel different than areas that we've identified as suburban, where the street and block structures are a little looser or curvilinear. You see cul-de-sacs, homes around cul-de-sacs. And the parcels and the relationship with the parcels to the buildings is different. In the suburban residential, not all, but in a lot of suburban residential compared to the urban, the blocks or the lots on a block are more irregular in shape, right? Especially around cul-de-sacs and so forth. The size of the house, the lot coverage of the house in many subdivisions is a higher lot coverage than you find in some urban or some rural areas, right? The shape of the parcel, in the urban parts of the city, the lots tend to be, you know, more deep than they are wide, right? In suburban areas, it varies, but oftentimes the lots are square-ish, as wide as they are deep. And so these patterns and the buildings, as they sit on the lots, they all shape the perception of what the character of a neighborhood is. And so when we look at these differences and we look at the zoning, the current zoning is not calibrated in a way that respects and even recognizes the difference between neighborhood patterns that we might characterize as urban and suburban. And so in that analysis that we did, we identified, for example, just looking at the R16 zone, which is the most common residential in the new terminology, residential low form zone. And what we find is, in fact, R16 is mapped to areas that look, or that are in urban context and that are in suburban context. So right there, it tells us that the standards in R16 aren't really in line with the differences in the way neighborhoods exist today and how they look and feel. So our initial thinking is proposing, again, similar to your mixed use zones, which identify suburban and urban patterns, organizing the residential zones by urban and suburban. And sometimes there's overlap, that what I just described is the same zone applies to different kinds of contexts. But also, the calibration of those zones varies in terms of the minimum lot area, for example. So what we found is that about 33% of the areas that are identified as urban context are zoned R16, and about 46% of the suburban areas are zoned R16. So a higher percentage of the suburban areas are currently zoned R16. Right? So this just is a first cut in terms of an approach of changing from your current zone, which is more of a one-size-fits-all, and is a way that, response to some of the public comment heard as part of the comprehensive plan conversation about concerns about compatibility, concerns about having the code, you know, allowing more housing diversity, but new development in a form that is respectful to the existing neighborhoods. Simplifying the residential use regulation. So one of the things that staff has shared with us and have gone through a thought process of addressing some of the new state regulations, state legislation on land use. And so today's uses for residential uses across the residential zones, from the R143 to the RMH zones. You might be familiar that, right? Single-family dwelling units are allowed in all of the zones except RMH. And accessory dwelling units, sometimes unlimited. But for the most part, duplexes, attached dwelling units, multi-dwelling units are not allowed in many of the, again, what are in the plan terms, the new terms in the plan, low-form residential, right? And low-form residential comprises most of the area of the city. So most of the area of the city is, as you well know, really constrained to a single unit. And so really, what we are discussing with the staff is moving to just recognizing it as residential, which would allow you to collapse a lot of the, today, what are distinguished or distinct different use categories, basically into a much simpler residential use category. In terms of compatible housing options, here again, we are taking a page from the future land use map and the construct of the low-form residential, mid-form residential. And we're looking at, how do we craft and calibrate new zones in support of those ideas in the comp plan? And for us, it really lies in the, looking at the lot sizes, as I was mentioning earlier, both the shape and the size of lot sizes that we find in urban areas compared to suburban areas, and the building form, especially in terms of how buildings sit on the parcel. And so again, from some of the input that was collected in the planning process, there's a discussion about allowing more units, again, as long as they come in a building form that is respectful of the neighborhood. So the approach that we're looking at is how do we, oops, what happened? Looks like we went backwards there. Oh, yeah, how do we regulate the building size, the overall mass and scale of a building, and allow more units within the same building form? So rather than just controlling for different categories of use intensity, allowing more diversity of housing in ways that is controlled by the size of the buildings. And so here's an example of how we dig into this. We have so many different models, but we want to just give you an example of what this thought process looks like. So we're looking at the urban context, and we're looking at R16 areas that are specifically. And so when we look at every single lot that is zoned R16 in areas that we've mapped as urban, what we find is the typical lot size is about 9,200 square feet. The typical building size is about 1,250 square feet, one, not even one and a half stories, right? So it's a pretty low-form scale, not really large houses. I mean, there's 1,250 square feet houses most of the time, and most of the time, the lots are about 9,200 square feet. Now, today, the minimum lot area is 6,000 square feet for those areas zoned R16. So right there, that tells us that, something really important, and that is, while the zoning has a minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet, the market and developers and investors and home buyers made decisions to create and buy a product that was not the minimum lot area of 6,000 square feet, but was actually more, was ended up being at around 9,200 square feet, right? So, and this happens a lot. In fact, this happens most of the time, that what the market delivers is often under what the zoning actually would allow. By right, you could allow more housing, but the market was different at the time. So when we modeled these, we built a model at that, about that 9,200 square foot dimension, and we modeled a few houses here that are depicting, both on a corner lot and mid-block lot, lots, buildings that are about 1,250 square feet, okay? And so this is the depiction of your as-is condition, the existing condition, the perspective of how people or the situation of what most people think and feel their neighborhood looks like. Under the current zoning, you could build out nearly 17,000 square feet of house. All right, now, that's pretty big. But that's what your current zoning allows. Will the market do that? Will people actually build houses that big? Well, no, but the thing is, is right now, in your zoning... In your zoning, this the way that it works. It provides. Quite a lot of capacity in the same and the use is constrained to a single family. What's important here is that. The way that we characterize this is that in some ways. The code is doing something opposite, isn't just the use of a single family. Use, right? The code is actually privileging. A much bigger structure. And limiting it to a single use. With a single family. Rather than. Privileging. More affordable, smaller units in the neighborhood. Right? And so and by the way, this is not unusual. This is just about every city that we work in. This is what we find. Um and so. The amount of space that um one has, if it's a speculative venture and a developer is doing it. The amount of square footage is a pretty significant. Determinant of what the price point on the product that gets built there. It's going to be, right? And right now, the code does very little to manage the size. And its relationship of a new building to the existing neighborhood scale and pattern. But also then potentially some. Cost of um of the product. So one of the things that we've talked about a lot with the staff and uh we understand have been part of conversations. In Lakewood is examining this this idea of what if you limited the size, the total size and square footage of the building. Right? And so uh we, again, this is just one example, one model, but what if it was twenty five hundred square feet? And again, this is above grade, not counting basements here, but what if uh the limit for a single? Unit. Was twenty five hundred square feet, what based on the data that we've got, that's still twice. The square footage of the average size house in R one six. Right, so. It's still bigger than the way the world pretty much exists today. And and then we looked at that took twenty five hundred square foot. Of space in an envelope and said, well, what if that could be a duplex? Right? You could be a front back, it could be a stacked uh flat. But same building form and mass, but the use goes to duplex. So each unit in this duplex configuration could be twelve hundred and fifty square feet. Which today is the mean size of a single family house in our one six neighborhoods. So again, not small duplexes by any means, but um just a way and approach. Uh to address the scale of new development and infill development. Uh and its relationship to existing patterns. Well, what if we allowed? That to go three units and it's still managed is controlled at twenty five hundred square feet. Uh there are different ways that one could configure a triplex, uh but you can see that obviously we're holding the total square footage. Um the per unit's core footage is going down, so in this case it goes down to about eight hundred and thirty three usable square feet. Um and then if you went to a fourplex. Um it's down to about six hundred and twenty five square feet. Now, we just did this as initial modeling as an idea of. Um an approach. To find ways to allow more units in house scale buildings that. Uh respect the scale and character and form of the neighborhood. And. The next step in in thinking about this is um. You know. How you might allow more incrementally more square footage? If you did more units. Yeah. And so and we're also looking at um uh options for allowing multiple buildings. On a lot. These are often. Uh referred to as cottage courts. So again, this is a way of. Uh allowing more units on a site. More buildings on the site potentially. Um but the buildings are of the scale of other buildings already in the neighborhood. It's just that the site is more productive in the potential for. The the range of housing options. Uh and types of housing and then and then what was uh uh council member. Lo was describing earlier about more units in terms of the potential capacity of housing uh in Lakewood. So there's a lot of numbers on this chart and it's late, but um this is just a way of of uh showing kind of. Acrosswalk from the comp plan guidance on the left, right? Residential, low form residential, mid form residential, those are terms you're familiar with from the future land use map designations. And when we look at the context of suburban and urban. Um the low form residential. Um comprise are comprised of. A lot of the suburban uh and rural kind of conditions. And some of the lower density urban, but when it comes to the mid form residential. A lot of them are in the urban category. And then we look at the existing zoning. And the string of zones from least dense uh to more dense. Going top to bottom and the minimum lot sizes. And so this is, this is how we're we're looking at. What's really happening on the ground? So for example. In the R one twelve. Minimum lot area is twelve thousand five hundred square feet. The mean parcel size of. Of. Lots that are zoned. R one twelve is nineteen thousand square feet. The median is at fifteen seven. So in general, the lot sizes, as you find them today, the parcel sizes are. Quite a lot bigger than what the minimum lot requirement is in the zoning. And that's where you have some room to make some adjustments. So the beginning of our recommendations and what we're exploring. Is looking at. For example, in the R one forty three and the R one eighteen. Uh potentially merging those. And collapsing rather than having uh all of these six zones. Um maybe collapsing to three, potentially four, but. Um R one forty three and R one eighteen potentially could merge. Uh R one twelve. We could split. And and also merge with the lower form zones. Uh and R one nine. Um the R one nine might split and merge sometimes with R one twelve and R one six. And the R one six and R two could uh could merge and and they would. Split potentially. There's a kind of an urban flavor and a suburban flavor. So the idea of merging these again. Well, it may seem drastic, what we're looking at is the actual size of the existing parcels. Right? Uh in terms of how you might group. Uh your existing zone to simplify the range of zoning districts as. Part of what uh we were asked to help figure out. And so the next step is uh going in and um. Calibrating what those new zones that might merge. Uh existing zones and collapse existing zones into fewer and and what those standards might be. And so um. Yeah, so that's that's the work that's going on there. I'll hand it back over to Sam.
Thanks, Peter. Um so the fourth piece we want to highlight today is uh the simplification and updating the zoning regulations for the mixed use zone districts. Uh we understand that uh the um fifty percent requirement in the mixed use employment zone uh to require housing. Um or. To require non residential um has become a barrier to uh seeing development in these areas. So the direction is to expand housing capacity and option uh in these areas. Uh by removing that fifty percent requirement and allowing the market to uh provide something a little more. Uh compatible to uh what what we're seeing um is needed for these commercial areas. Um so that's one direction um and one avenue that we're exploring with this update. Uh the other piece is um. Uh looking at the transitions and um some of the standards related to how mixed use zones meet residential zones. Um and how that contextual transition is applied. Um currently, it's based on the existing. Uh building, not the existing zone district, so uh we want to make sure that um the zoning is going to. Support this contextual transition between these these different zone districts. Um we also want to uh improve the overall format and usability of the code. Um so this is what your code looks like currently. It's pretty organized and succinct. Um it's not as bad as a lot of other cities where we work, so um you have that going for you right now. Um but we also understand that uh the direction is to move from the PDF format into a Muni code format. Um something a little more interactive uh online. Um and that the desire is to also increase some graphics, some visualizations. Uh so it's not just long um scrolling text, but um the the code itself is actually presented in a more engaging. User friendly format. This is an example from Greeley. Um they updated their code, I think, a year or two ago. Um and this is a Muni code uh based. Uh published code, so you can see how some of the graphics start to relate to some of the text. Um so that's the direction we're going with the update for this code as well. We know staff has been working on other issues that we're just calling known issues uh to the code. We touched on a few of these already. Um these are again related to compliance uh with the state law. Becoming uh closer into um compliance with your new uh comp plan. Um and then also uh addressing some of the problems that staff has identified and staff has heard from the development community as. Uh barriers to development that aren't increasing the overall outcomes. Um so I believe you have more information about these in your packet. And um I think Travis wanted. To touch on next steps. Yeah.
Absolutely, so. Um yeah, we're here in March for your first study session on this. Uh the Planning Commission has a couple of public hearings, so they they've had their study session. They've got two public hearings scheduled in April on both the comp plan and the zoning code with final approval expected on April sixteenth. And then it will be back in your hands to do with what you will. Right now, um it sounds like we'll be scheduling a. Study session for uh probably early May. For you to dig deeper into the draft zoning code and then we will schedule from there uh a series of public hearings at your request. And with that, we will open it up to public or to your questions. Thank you.
No questions?
Good night then.
Surely it's not that late. Um Councilor Nation, then Councilor Matt Guerrero.
Okay, thank you. I I just have a quick question. Um. Travis, in the chart that you sent out with the proposed zoning changes. There's uh. Several different or maybe sent, they're posted out there. Um. There's several different colors, there's different. You know, in the in the, I I'm just trying to understand what the coloring means, like some of those. Lettering is different colors, but there's different segments that are. Some are yellow, some are blue or whatever. Can you clarify what that means?
Oh, gosh, I don't have that up in front of me and I don't believe there was meaning behind it. That that has been a. Just a staff document for years as we gathered uh. Portions of the code that were causing issues. So a lot of that's like, you know, numbering changes and adding things to lists. Um so I believe that was just uh, you know, different people adding to the list over the course of many years. Rather than an intentional um coloring system.
Okay, so. When you have um under the category. There's verbiage such as, I can share my screen if you want to see it, like I'm sure you're familiar with what it looks like, but.
Yeah, no.
Clarity clarity not addressed, requires amendment. Like I I'm just, I'm not clear on what the status is on these things. Um and I guess. Been trying to. Get the clarity or make adjustments or or something on that, like what is the timing for all of that and um.
So that 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 was an attempt. So so really, there are three inputs. To uh the changes in the zoning code. And you've heard tonight that the main ones are input from the comp plan. And these state law changes that we're addressing. The third one is this list of. However, many small technical changes in the code that I've identified over the past few years. In a couple of weeks, uh around the first of April, we're gonna. You know, uh put out the first draft, the first public draft of this for review by you, the public, by everybody. And it's going to contain, you know, these. Red lines that, again, the stuff you heard tonight, the redoing the residential zones, changes to the ME zone, et cetera. And then, you know, these individual thing, these smaller things will be part of that as well.
Okay, so. This will all be kind of clarified before the public hearings or?
Yes, you will have, you will have a doc, you know, a full document with all of the changes, all of the proposed changes to the zoning code.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Councilor Matt Guerrero.
Great, um. I recognize that we're not like fully going through all of the concepts this evening. Um I will say, you know, I think we all alluded to this. In our conversation about the cop plan. Um I just reiterate, I think once the actual zoning rewrite is drafted, I would be really interested both in like. Having enough time and process for questions, whatever that system looks like, but then also, of course, for workshop, we really like. Digging through the sections of it. Um. Some of the the questions that I have on on the concepts is, one, um in the beginning of the presentation, some of the conversations about. Like the values or input that were expressed by council in a resolution this fall, I believe we. Didn't say anything specifically about moving away from. Single family zoning and we used other language that could mean that, but that was like a little bit broader around like types of of. Zoning and land use and two, there was a conversation, it was, I think, both from community and from um. City council reflected around the focus on missing middle housing and well, yes. Missing middle is something that we talk about all the time. We also really specifically in that resolution, something that I think I have talked about a lot. Um is that the missing middle is not actually the only thing that I hope that we're aiming towards and the comp plan did not appear to only talk about. Missing middle housing and so um I don't know if that's something that. Folks want to clarify right in this moment, or if that's, those are points that are good for. Um continued future discussion, um but creating affordable housing that is truly affordable, more fully subsidized. Creating options for things that are well below market rate, not just market rate and missing middle. Um and thinking about also the balance in any of those categories of rent renting and um ownership. Um and of course, like maintaining our affordable housing that is um. Covenant uh uh affordable housing in this moment, I think, are all things that I I didn't really see reflected there. Um and that doesn't mean it's not in there, because this is like a pretty high level. Presentation about something that is really vast, it's really large, but I wanted to flag those couple of things um early and now.
And I guess the the one piece that I could respond to up now is is you're right, the the document from the council didn't say, you know. Make be big changes to single family zoning. That was really instigated by the state law that prohibits us from limiting the number of people in a unit. So as of, you know, a few months ago. Um a single, you know, a single family lot in Lakewood could be developed to one of those seventeen thousand square foot buildings and have twenty, thirty people in it and. Our zoning can't prohibit that under state law now. So the concept was. All right, how do we respond to that in a way that also responds to the council's request for more housing options and more choices? And the thought there is, well, the one piece that we do still have control on in our zoning code is the size of these structures. So we can limit the size of the structures to to, you know, um. respect the existing context of these neighborhoods. At the same time, the state's allowing unlimited people in these buildings with, you know, within the constraints of the building code, then it doesn't really matter if that 2,500-square-foot building has one unit or two units or three units, as, you know, as long as we're controlling the size of the structure. So that's where that came from. It wasn't necessarily instigated by council. It was instigated by by the state law changes.
Okay, it was talked about specifically as a council value.
Okay.
I also have a question on that whole category of of items. I think that I look forward to getting to wrestle a little bit about, like, the specifics of the sizing of setbacks versus lot size, and like, there's a lot there to play with. But for for this evening, I I do have a question, which is that is it truly the only thing that prevents infinite amounts of people from, like, living in any particular structure? And having a developer build however many units that they want in one place is based on on house, on unrelated family members? Because my understanding is that, like, the way that we articulate multifamily versus single family family isn't actually, like, directly in correspondence with the definition of how many unrelated people can be in one place. So like, the idea that we just, because of this law, changing our understanding of what family means, means that we have to get totally rid of all of our our zoning and totally rethink all of our understanding of what single-family versus multifamily building and zones are, like, doesn't quite square to me. And I'm and I'm wondering if folks can talk a little bit more about that. And again, maybe this is something that we will dig in more in the future. But like, having the permits, for example, to have many different addresses and mailboxes for different households is something that is is different than having lots of roommates. Right? So like, e- even this idea that square footage is now the only thing that changes, that like, will delineate the types of buildings being built, like, I'm not sure I'm totally believing that.
Believing what I've, what's missing. So I guess I would say the solution that's being proposed is not the only way to resolve state law, absolutely. But the state law does now allow, you know, unlimited unrelated people within whatever structure is built. So basically, you, you know, a six-bedroom house can rent out six bedrooms to multiple people, right? So it, once we've crossed that line, you know, is is there a downside to, instead of allowing six bedrooms to be rented out, allowing somebody to put a wall and have two families in there? It's, you know, it's it's allowing more housing options within the constraints put upon us, you know, by these state rules.
Yeah.
Not required, but the the people are, the people can be there. We're just allowing more flexibility to the layout within those four walls.
Right. And I think that, to me, that's okay, but then the idea that how we're then trying to split it up is exclusively with, like, I I don't know. I wonder, I'm curious about what other counselors think. You know, like, the theory around just sort of not having single-family zoning because of this state law. Like, I, it doesn't quite square with me, because, okay, so I will say that periodically throughout my life, over the last 15 years of living with various types of family and friends, et cetera, I have personally been breaking the law of, like, two plus you in multiple jurisdictions in my life. I broke that law when I was a student in Fort Collins, and I've broken that law in Lakewood before I was on city council when I was in my early twenties and I first moved here. That was not really an example of, like, my room that I was living in being householded separately to me. It was an example of me living with friends where we could share one mailbox and share one kitchen and, like, understood we had to navigate a driveway and understood we were navigating a single-family area, right? That, the idea that we had the the potential of being, like, code enforced, occasionally occurred to us, if I'm being completely frank, because I am, I've always been very interested in city ordinance and and code. But but that, right, that is more what we're talking about, or if I even think about when we define relation, right? I have also lived with my two very, very good friends who I, at this point, consider my family, and they have been partnered for nine years, but they're not technically married, and I'm not blood related to any of them. And so when we all lived together, that's not, we were a family unit, really, in a lot of respects, and as much as cousins can be. And I think the intention, right, behind getting rid of this law is really, like, racialized, right? Like, this was a way to prevent intergenerational families from being able to live together. It's a way to prevent people from being able to catch family members who have immigrated here, who are looking for work, right? Like, that that was sort of the point of a lot of those rules in many cities to, that have, you know, come from the past, to reduce those kinds of family structures. It's not really, like, getting rid of that law isn't really aimed at the idea that we just can't have multifamily zoning be something specific that's about apartments and townhomes, right? So so I recognize that we might still need some of these rules, but I think I'm like, I I I think maybe I'm opening this up even just to, like, the rest of council, like, like, thinking about how to wrestle with that, just, this doesn't quite strike me as, like, it's, I feel like it's missing an old element here that I can't quite articulate at this time. Well, and I guess I'll put out my one, I'll put out my one last thing, as we all continue to ruminate about, like, our next steps and big themes. In the mixed use, I think there's a lot of really great progress that's happened there. I think there is still a question from folks of how are we working to prevent, like, the continued food deserts and wanting to really compel and increase complete neighborhoods where we do see, like, walkable interconnected amenities for neighborhoods. And so that is something, like, I recognize what we're doing with, like, trying to split properties and mandate that didn't quite work. But I think totally relying on the market has also not worked, right? We end up with exceptions to those permits already, and we end up with just, like, big packs of new residential, because people need housing, and we end up missing some of these really necessary things that increases our traffic, increases our driving, decreases neighborhoods' wellness and health. And so that is something, too, that I'm I'm continuing to research and look into, but we'll be, like, thinking about and pushing more on those types of questions.
Counselor Cruz.
Thank you. Yeah, lots to on it. Excited to to dig into this more tonight and and moving forward. Kind of building off my co-counselors' set of points, I I would agree that I I see kind of this change away from specifically single-family zoning and and more kind of aligning residential uses is not being exactly only related to lifting the number of unrelated people that can live together, like, within the building code regulations, which do, right, like, require space for people. I just want that to be clear. But like, also, I see it as aligned with, like, our values around equity and kind of the history of single-family zoning. I see it as aligned with our sustainability goals and our affordable housing goals, like, I, that is just a a piece of the vision that maybe I was I was hearing there. And so I I I support the direction we're moving in. Personally, I want to be clear about that. And something I I kind of wanted to ask with regard to kind of like the 200, the 2,500 kind of square feet piece, I know there was one comment on Lakewood Speaks about that potentially, and I know we've heard this in a couple of community meetings, like, seeming like a little bit of a small like, limit, even though obviously that's above, you know, wildly above, like, the average. But then also, I'm wondering, like, in any iterations of when you all have taken on this type of a project, like, have there been kind of gradations based on how many units? Like, because I could see, right, like, a 4,000-square-foot above-grade house wild on a 9,000-square-foot lot, but, you know, maybe that's not as wild if it's for a thousand-foot townhomes or something like that, right? And so I'm just kind of curious what the thinking or or where we have to go on that front.
Yeah, that's a great, that's a great question. And the answer's, the answer is yes. The way that we typically do this is as more units are proposed, there's incrementally additional square footage. Right? And again, here's, here's what this basically does, is it, it it still controls the overall mass and scale of a new structure, but basically reverses the situation that you have today, which is privileging the single, big single, over multiple smaller. And 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 allows the additional square footage to grow as more units are proposed. And the the example that we ran through was holding 2,500 feet constant, right? And in that case, yeah, the unit, when you start to get to four units, it 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 only in certain circumstances might that actually pencil out, right? Maybe the unit is too small. And so that's where finding that threshold of where the square footage goes, begins to go up as the units go up is is where we are in modeling that right now. So the starting point on this approach is what's the limit for the single, right? Because, again, if if the limit is too small, then, yeah, maybe it's just not politically viable as a proposal. If it's too big, as it is today, which is huge, but if it's too big, you're also not potentially going to realize anything but single-family houses, right? That and again, this is played out in a lot of markets in Denver, for example. We didn't restrict the total square footage of a single-family house. So even though you could do a duplex, it was more profitable to build one big single-family house, because there was a market demand for a big, expensive, single-family house. Has the market been saturated with the biggest single-family house that you fit? Not quite yet, but there definitely is more, there are definitely more duplex, there are definitely more smaller multi-unit buildings getting built now. But again, those duplexes, each duplex, you know, the way it played out in in Denver and a lot of places is they scraped a, let's say, 900,000-square-foot bungalow, and they developed to 2,500-square-feet units in a duplex form, right? Because you could, because the mass and scale allowed under the, under the zoning was quite a lot. So that, just the math and the way that the code is set up today isn't helping you get to your goal of creating more housing choices, more affordability, or sort of yeah, more housing options.
Absolutely. Yeah, I appreciate that, and we'll look forward to kind of exploring what that looks like as as the plan moves forward, and would just signal my personal interest in in that approach. I think maybe to, one kind of follow-up question on this, I would wonder in this sort of future state in which we adopt a code such as what you're describing, like, how, because what we're seeing right in our area is that there's a lot of subdividing, and like, that is essentially how how folks are kind of redeveloping a lot of single-family lots. And so I'm just curi-, I'm just like curious what that would look like in this future state.
Yeah. And so the 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 last slide that we showed on modeling multiple buildings on on a parcel is is getting at that. So the result, so so part of it is how we are calibrating the minimum lot sizes. So in the R16, for example, we urban, right, the low-form urban from the comp plan description, we're looking at lowering the minimum lot area for what it is today. But we're also looking at what that might do in terms of allowing subdivision of parcels. So if the median multiple, multi, so here it is. In our, if you look across on that line, R16, the minimum parcel size today is 6,000 square feet. But the way they exist out in the world is they're over 9,000 square feet, more often than not. And so if we set the minimum lot area at 3,000 square feet, it would be possible for someone to take a typical R16 lot and subdivide it into three lots and build three single-family houses on that, on 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 what was one lot, right? So that's how we're looking at the minimum parcel sizes in the recalibration compared to the the way that those zones are calibrated today, and how we're studying how to collapse the zones toward a simpler set of zones, but also related to the patterns that already exist.
Thank you. And I'll just ask one final question and then see my time and go back the line. So with regard, speaking on the minimum lot sizes question, I I kind of hear what y'all are saying in terms of of thinking about respecting context, moving forward, what is the market actually delivering? And I just like a, like a conversation with the constituent came to mind about, they have a tiny home, they can't afford any of the lots big enough for it to meet the minimum lot size. And so like, where do folks like that fit into us wanting to make, like, an affordable, like, more opportunities for, like, affordable housing moving forward in this setting?
Yeah. I think that's, again, that that's we're definitely contemplating that, the the threshold for what that, what that might look like. So that, one of the last slides that I spoke to were how we're, we're studying multiple buildings on a parcel. And so tiny homes might be the kind of building form or the building type that would you, we didn't show them here, but you could arrange, you can imagine organizing multiple tiny homes on one lot in a kind of a cottage court fashion. And so, you know, that might be, that might be, but that's what we're exploring in these multiple buildings per lot situations. So and well, the the other piece, too, is it isn't just the lot total square footage, it's also the frontage. So but as we're looking at some of these, in these cases where you'd have multiple, allow for multiple buildings for lot options, we typically need the lot to be a little bit bigger than a standard lot. But also in the subdivision situations, we look at the typical lot widths. And even though we might be reducing the total minimum, or reducing the minimum lot size, we might control for the lot width, so that the way that the land, right, the way development appears from the street, it's continuing the pattern of sort of the lot parcels as as the neighborhood is currently comprised. But as you mentioned earlier, if people subdivide into smaller lots in the middle or in the back of the lot, then the change from the street is is less apparent, because, right, the the lots, the lots don't suddenly get really skinny.
Counselor Sinks, and then Counselor Lo.
Great, thanks. Mr. Parker, you mentioned that the proposed changes to the code would be coming in a couple of weeks. So I wonder if it'll, if the proposed changes will reflect a red line at it, or will it be such a dramatic change that it's kind of starting over? And it'll be completely different. How how do you foresee the code coming to us?
Yeah, yeah, maybe I'll let Sam and Peter talk to that. You're right, the the last time we did a new code, we changed it so fundamentally that a red line was kind of meaningless. We, you know, changed the organization, changed everything. I don't I don't thi-, I don't, our pla-, our changes this time aren't as fundamental as, as they were in twenty twelve. And aren't as organizationally impactful, but maybe I'll let Sam talk a little bit to that.
Yeah, I, I think the best way to describe it is it's probably going to be a hybrid. There are some articles where we are making just surgical changes and I think those are best conveyed with the red line approach. For the residential zones, we, we are seeing that as an overhaul of that one section. So that we might just create a new separate draft for that one section. But the way we're tracking it right now is a spreadsheet, so you can see um section by section, which ones. Um, do you want to look at the red lines? Which ones are we just pre- uh presenting a new draft to? So I think a hybrid is the best way to characterize that.
Great, thanks. We'll look forward to that.
Councillor Low.
Thanks, Mayor. Uh, thanks for this presentation. Really helpful. Now it's getting late. Um, but. I think all these zoning changes are exciting and, you know, energizing. So um, it, it, it's exciting to be able to dive into this over the coming um weeks and months. Uh, I, I'll just pick up a couple of points that I, I heard councillor Cruz um asking about. Um, oh, my, sorry, my headphones are about to die.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Great, sorry about that. Um, on, um. So I, the, the presentation um that, that talked about how, if, if I understood correctly, basically it was making the point that under the current code. Before you sort of had that slide showing the very, very large buildings in pink. You showed that a maximum build out could be over sev-, over sif-, seventeen thousand square feet total. For a, a non-corner lot, over sixteen thousand square feet total for the corner lots. Let me, let me, thank you. Yes, that slides. Let me just make sure that I, but what we're basically saying is under our current code. Even with, even with the setback requirements and all the dimensional requirements and the height limitations, theoretically. Someone can still come into an R one six house and, and knock down the house and build a house. That is theoretically that build while complying with all aspects of the, the zoning code, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
So where, um, I, I understand it was sort of a hypothetical, I, I heard um, Mr. Park very clearly say like you're not wedded to twenty five hundred. Is like an absolute hard cap, but where did twenty five hundred come from? Cause I mean, that, that is obviously dramatically less than the current maximum build out allowed. But I think you heard, you know, that, yeah, you can see on the screen the. Background of what's, you know, been built now or you, what's on the ground now. So it's a number higher than the average, but not, you know, sixteen thousand square feet. Right, okay. So it's, I mean, so, right, but, but, but there's no, there's. Well, and, and I should.
Yeah, please.
I should say that, that won't be our proposal uniformly across the city. I think that, that. You know, what we're working on will have multiple, at least two different size categories.
Yep.
But that's basically the logic itself. I mean, the, the logic for the sort of the maximum square footage is something that's meaningfully higher than. Than, than the mean right now in a given zoning district, but quite a bit lower than like the theoretical maximum build out as. So, as to sort of offset some of the other changes in the, in the zoning code. Is that, is that the theory as I understand it?
Yeah, yes, and um. You know, part of. Uh, part of what goes into it is studying these models. And, and just kind of getting a sense of where. Where does the expression of that, in a maxed out version become potentially disruptive? Um, that's going to vary by different people's perceptions of the world, of course, right? Um, but as you said, right now, it's a pretty, it's a pretty big number. You could just not do anything about it. Uh, or you could use that as a starting point for how you can move away from where you are now. Which is a code that really encourages few expensive over more affordable, right? And so that, that becomes an, that, that's actually a pretty important question uh as a starting point in the approach. The, the, the other part of this is um. Where we typically uh have seen this approach used. Uh, what the community goes out with in the initial draft. Always turns out to be a bigger number in the final. Um, cause it's a negotiation, right? And, and where do you want to start that, that conversation? Um, but. As I said, the, the, the other models that we're, that we're looking at is how, how those increments. Might be set against the beginning max. Um. As a way of um, you know, allowing more units. They're going to be smaller than if you just did the lower number of units, but still units that um. Would be um, you know, would not be so small that. You wouldn't see them getting developed, right?
Understand, that's, that, that's very helpful. Um. I, I guess I would just, I would sort of second the, the, the theme I heard councillor Cruz picking up that I, I think particularly for. Um, a development that is going for duplex or triplex or quadplex precisely to your point, precisely because you, you, you already laid out the, the case. That there's this market limitation um at twenty five hundred square foot on, on adding in these, uh, you know, I'm getting to a. A triplex or quadplex that um, an, an additional square footage bonus, bonus for under, you know. Obviously, there's a lot of dials you can turn here, you know, do you do that across the city or just in certain districts? I think there's a lot of questions about how you limit that, but I would, I would be very interested in seeing some sort of square footage bonus. To allow for um certainly fourplexes and at least the, the right parts of the city where it makes sense to be feasible from a market perspective. That, that was, I guess, my reaction to that. Um. One other question, um, going back just a, a moment ago, and Mr. Park, you're already kind of addressing this a little bit. I mean, council quite a few months ago was talking about the idea of creating an R one zero district rather than R one six. I, in the current draft proposal, you, you're looking, it looks like it's sort of a minimum lot size of three thousand, right? Why, why not, why not have a um zero lot sizes in at least some parts of the city? Why, why set the minimum at three thousand?
For, for the residential low form areas or?
Yeah. Well, sorry, let me, let me back up. So did I, i- is it the case that in the, in the, in the medium areas, you actually are. Uh, anticipating zero lot sizes?
Yeah, I mean, I think that in the multi-unit zones, um, the. I mean, the bigger one, the, the minimum lot size doesn't matter as much. It's, it's really in the low residential forms that. Yeah, that the um. You know, again, if you think about a neighborhood, an urban neighborhood or suburban neighborhood and you look at. The, 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 the lot pattern, the parcels and the houses sitting on the lots. And so by maintaining some of them in a lot area, and, and as I mentioned before. Managing the size of the lot frontage or the lot width at the front. Is, is a useful tool to sort of, in the first part, managing the size of the parcels. Versus if we just have zero, then it, 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 it. You're kind of starting with a, like, zero reference to the existing context. Um, in multi-unit sites on corridors or on bigger sites that, that's becomes irrelevant. But where you have a, an existing pattern of what is primarily a single family neighborhood. Um. Uh, keeping the middle parcel sizes and managing the, the lot widths is, is a way for us to. Um. You know, start out with uh development pattern that is derived from the existing context.
But let me, let me just clarify more fundamental question. For mid-form residential, do you anticipate that you will, uh? Uh, I mean, I, I'm looking at this chart again, I'm seeing minimum parcel sizes is, is sort of not filled in, at least for the mid-form residential. Do you anticipate there will be zero lot sizes there? Or, or are you expecting a three thousand square foot to be the minimum lot size for mid-form too? Sorry if I missed that earlier.
Yeah, so like the RMF today does not have a minimum parcel. We wouldn't introduce it there. The RMH, which is mobile home, I actually think, we've been thinking about this, the mobile home. Is really a low form residential. It's not a mid-form in terms of the scale, right? And what we understand, what the difference is between low form and mid-form residential that the plan is contemplating. Um, I think what, on the, on the, on the other ones, on the. Uh, the MRS and the MRU, um. Right now it's five and uh ten dwelling, five dwelling units per acre. So it's a different kind of a, it's a density. Um, rather than unit per minimum lot area per unit. Um, so we. I don't, I don't know that that's really a minimum lot area.
But, but to be clear, the, the current plan is for, for all R one six and R two. The idea is you would move to a minimum parcel size of three thousand square foot and, okay. I, I mean, you, I guess what I heard you saying earlier about the logic for that is like, well, if we have zero lot sizes. It's harder to deal with things like dimensional requirement. I mean, but, I mean, it, it kind of sounds to me like what you're talking about, there are things like setback requirements or. I mean, I mean, those are all things theoretically that can be addressed with setback requirements or other dimensional requirement. I mean, you could still say, notwithstanding the, the lot size, we still have a minimum setback requirement, right?
Yeah. You would, but if you made a really skinny lot.
Well.
I mean, I mean, the thing is, is that um, the typical lot, let's say, is sixty feet wide. And so what if I made twenty foot lots in a sixty foot wide? I'm in a neighborhood of sixty, seventy foot wide lots, right? And so, I mean, you could have, I mean, there, there, there's a whole. No, anyway, I, 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 I think. For the low form residential. Um, eliminating, we're not seeing what the advantage would be to have a, a zero lot. Um, side, you know, minimum parcel size, but. We're definitely open to exploring it further.
Yeah, those were the two, just this question of the, the, the square footage maximum and whether adding on some, a, a bonus for. You know, for your, a fourplex and then this question of zero lot size, were just the two thing, the two big picture things I heard. And saw in this presentation that I think are worth exploring further. Um, generally very encouraged by the direction of this and, and thank you for all the work that's gone into it. And looking forward for the chance for it. I'm sure we're going to talk about this at the end, but um, sounds like, well, we already made a decision. I'm excited that we're going to have a second chance to like, look through this, either a study session or a workshop. Um, once we have a draft of the, of the, like an actual draft text. Um. Uh, to, to work through. Um, councillor Ryan has. Go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I, I was just gonna say, you know, Sam mentioned to the question of a red line, you know, she mentioned it might be a hybrid. And one of the, one of the goals that we're trying to meet also is, right, having a code that's easy to understand and to use. And so right now, the way your zoning districts are described. Uh, in, in the code organization, it's, it's pretty clear, but, but the zone districts are described in article three. Uh, the dimensional standards for um. You know, for development standards uh are in article five, the residential building inside centers are article six. I mean, right now, there, there are separate articles that you have to put together to understand. How to design the building and so. One of the things that we are exploring is how can we organize in a graphic manner similar to the, some of the graphics you saw tonight. To, to use to convey the zoning standards, the development standards, the building standards in one diagram. Rather than in, in texts described across three different articles, right? And so um, that obviously is a pretty significant change from the format of the code that you have today. But um, we, we think it's a pretty efficient way to meet the goal of having code that's easier to understand. And more accessible. Um, anyway, that, that's just one of the. Details, I think I wanted to point out when Sam said it might be kind of a hybrid. It's not going to be like. You know, these five lines of text get struck and they get replaced with this text. It's, it, there might be some other structural things that um. Might help you get to uh your goal of a, of more accessible code.
Uh, understood. I want to, I want to see the floor here so we can, I, I'm sure the mayor's trying to land the plane on this final agenda item. But the last thing I'll just say is, is um, uh, this is a big piece of business. This is an important piece of business, obviously, the, the, the zoning rewrite. Um, I'm, I'm really glad that we're moving expeditiously on doing this and I think it's important the planning commission have sufficient time and space. To sort of work through this. Um, you know, uh, Mr. Parker already talked about the, the multiple planning sessions that are, that are planned. I, if, if, I think if I'm, if I, if I'm understanding where the pieces are right now. The, the draft of the actual zoning, the actual text is not yet to the planning commission. So I, I, I just, I do think it'll be important the planning commission have enough time and bandwidth to like, work through that before it comes to us. I, I do think that will, that will help keep this process relatively tighter rather than. You know, lots and lots of edits or amendments from council from the dais, which I think could get messy rather, rather quickly. Um, but thank you and thanks for all the work that's gone into this.
Councillor Nice, John. Thank you. I'll be quick. We're coming up on the bewitching hour, so uh. Um, just a couple of comments. One is, I want to second what councillor Maya Guerrero said. About the mixed-use zoning and um, the need to, you know, developers may not want to. Uh, build that type of structure, but I think especially where we're talking about high-density housing with apartments and things like that. I think that's pretty essential that there, there be a combination. Um, you know, they may not make as much money off of it, but does serve the needs of their residents. Um, in an apartment building, for instance, or something like that, I think that becomes important. Um, I wanted to ask, is there, you, um, Mr. Park, you mentioned a couple of communities that you've worked with before and done this type of thing. Are there examples of those that you could provide and what, what was implemented potentially um? That would be helpful. Cause I've already gotten a number of questions on, on some of this and I'd like to be able to have a basis of comparison. Um, and, and I guess the, the other question I have, so for instance, in the low form residential. Area which is. Light orange, it's called, right? Um, in theory, what you're proposing is that in a existing neighborhood. Someone could. Scrape their house and rebuild additional structures on that lot under this new zoning, right?
Um, yeah, in some cases they can do that now too. Um, but, right.
So you're proposing that that zoning be changed across the city in the areas that are designated as light orange? I, I guess my question is, you know, again, that's why I'm kind of looking for examples because um. You know, I've already gotten some feedback on this, but the concern is you have established neighborhoods. Um. And, you know, so someone next door, you could tear down their house or somebody could buy it and tear it down. And build multiple units on it. Um, and kind of change the integrity of the neighborhood and the expectation of the homeowner.
I, I think that what we're trying to solve is the new state law allows some significant changes now. So in other words, we, someone could buy the house next to yours now in your R one six district and put up a sixteen thousand. Square foot home and put twenty or thirty people in there, unrelated people. So I, I think our proposal is respond.
So I, I think our proposal is a response to the. You know, what, what the state just did that allows significant changes today. By, our proposal is to limit the building size much more significantly than it is now.
Okay. And I guess, again, I'm going to come back to this time and time again, but what you're not showing on your. Uh. Graphics there are trees. And we are. Rapidly losing trees and we will lose a lot more. And a lot of these um, existing neighborhoods have a lot of mature trees on them. And we continue to cut these down and we're about to facilitate cutting down an urban forest. That is definitely going to affect our air quality and it's going to have a, a, a larger overall effect on the communities. In which we do this. Um, and. You know, it, it's just something like, a lot of references to sustainability. And making improvements in that area and making some strides, but that is a big concern with this um, particular proposal. So. I'm done. Thank you.
All right, and it is two minutes before the hour. Um, so we already really established our next steps as far as. This topic um, in conjunction with the comprehensive plan earlier, so. Look forward to another conversation um, coming up in the future. We've got, you will. Plan to do something of a workshop format so that we are all live together, talking through. Some of these important things and. What I would ask, I think councillor Matt Guerrero had a great idea earlier this evening in the way that we moved through the budget process. Is getting questions to staff in advance and answers are then also able to be shared with each of us in advance. So if that would work, Mr. Parker, for you and your team, I think that might be a good way for us to get you guys some questions. Ahead of time and so that we can also come to that workshop as prepared as possible. Also having the ability to then voice out some of these questions and responses to community members too. So could I open that up as a, hey, let's go ahead and turn on that faucet so that folks start to get to you these questions, especially. After tonight with some of this being fresh in our minds.
Absolutely. Like Roger Waddnell said earlier, the, the sooner the better, the more we can get in early, the more we can, sooner we can incorporate it.
Okay, I appreciate your flexibility with that, councillor Matt Guerrero.
Sorry, I just, I, I definitely already have questions, but I also want to. Flag that whenever we have like a more complete. Draft, and I think after the next planning commission conversations, there's then going to be sort of like, at least for me, and it sounded like maybe from some others. Like a bit of a re-up of some of the really detail-oriented questions. Um, because, right, as some of the logistics and specifics are getting like shaken out. There are things that I maybe have questions on, but I want to see what ends up in the actual draft. And then I would have more questions. So I, I want to. Ask that we figure out some way to like kind of delineate like when and how that happens.
So um. We'll move forward with getting questions over to you and as far as. Coming back for a workshop type of an environment, it sounds like it's possible May fifth may still be available. So Ms. Hudson, do we want to just hold that loosely or do we think that we can commit to that? Date?
Um, yes. Yes, sorry, we'll pencil that in. Um, and then I'll work with staff to, to um, secure that to make sure that that's going to work.
Okay. I'll take pencil. It's eleven o'clock at night. Pencils, pencil will work. So, okay, with that, um, any closing comments on this topic before I usher in. A potentially very brief committee update. Okay, do we have any committee updates tonight? All right, then seeing no more further business this evening, we'll go ahead and adjourn tonight's study session at eleven oh two. PM. Thank you, everybody.